The Council Committee on Finance will now come to order. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadeem.
Here.
Kamara.
Here.
Dion.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Palatier.
Here.
Here.
Reposo.
Here.
Washington.
Here.
President of Liberty, LaBeau.
Here.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Item one is Citizens Input. First person signed up to speak is Colin Diaz, 560 Room.
Madam President.
Yes?
I'd like to say something before Citizen Input starts.
What's that?
Everyone gets three minutes. I understand that. If we're going to waive the rules for some, you need to waive them for everybody. But the other thing is, to come down and demean someone, or call somebody a liar, or do whatever, is not acceptable. It's time to talk about whatever the issue is that the individual wants to speak of. I got calls from people thinking that sometimes Citizen Input, it becomes too personalized, and it shouldn't be.
I agree with you.
And I must say, I agree. So with that...
I agree with you, Counselor, but we're also not censoring input. We don't know what they're going to say, and we don't have to waive the rules. It's a case-by-case basis. It's the will of the Council.
We're not censoring anybody's rule, but if somebody starts to demean someone, I would hope that you would hit the gavel, because it's not appropriate. We don't want our children to bully and name-call. We don't expect our adults to be doing it as well. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor.
I'll make a comment in support of that. I've received some calls as well, from constituents, and I'm not going to say that at times it's an embarrassment, I won't say that, but I just did, I guess. But Madam President, I hope that, and you will, if it becomes defamation and personal attacks, I'm not talking about you, Mr. Diaz. If it becomes that, I mean, we should be talking about city business, make your point, and no name-calling.
Great.
I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. The subject is FY '23 Budget. Mr. Diaz, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Council President, and members of the City Council. And just getting into the budget, I just had a couple of questions regarding some of the items on it. I think we all know, I sent an email beforehand, I believe the mayor's office is on the agenda today, and I think everyone knows now the mayor's office did personally use the city credit card to buy $141 in K-cups for the office. I don't know if that was for an event, I don't know if that was just for the office. However, I don't think that is a proper use of taxpayers' monies, especially when we have a five-year fiscal deficit in the future. And he also used the city credit card to pay for a ticket to a Chamber of Commerce meeting. And if that's what the mayor thinks is a wise investment, and I think he's privy to that, however, I think we constantly see a misuse of taxpayer money. And now, on the Law Department's side, they have over hundreds of thousands of dollars in outside legal costs. And my question is, what is the point of hiring in-house attorneys? If we're just going to spend even more, I believe it was $400,000, I don't have the number in front of me, on outside legal costs? That was just the two things I wanted to bring up on the budget. You know, I've also, through COVID and coming to the meetings, I've heard everyone come to Citizen Input, to the City Council chambers, and I like to applaud every single one of them. I didn't hear any name-calling, or any disrespect, and the only person I've heard them call a liar is the mayor, because he is. He misled the city.
Right there.
He said last year that the city was in great financial, fiscal shape. And how can you believe that when you have a five-year fiscal forecast of deficits, which he refuses to address? The mayor is a liar. There, I said it. That's within my purview to say, because he is. And I like to applaud everyone who comes down to Citizen Input, and speaks their mind, and holds this administration accountable, which is the job of the City Council, it's the job of every resident, if they believe in the transparent government, and thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
The next person signed up to speak is Robert Kamara, address 127 Ganging Street. The subject is "Who's Budget?" When you're ready, you have three minutes, Mr. Kamara. When you're ready, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Madam President.
Counselors. I entitled my presentation "Who's Budget?", because what you're looking at today is the mayor's budget. What I'm here to give you is a perspective of a citizen's Fall River. Because the universe I live in, in this particular time, with inflation rampant, a recession coming, people being basically crippled, this is not the time to be looking at some of the things that are in this budget. I won't get specific, because I can't right now. But let me tell you the Fall River I look at. You can look at the statistics. You know, I come up here, I will give you numbers. The state household median income is 84 and change. I'm not going to go, because you can go from one source or another. Fall River's is in the 40s. The recapping the income is 26 compared to 45. Our poverty level is over 18 percent, the state average is 9 percent. We, the general population in Fall River is either poor or working poor. Now, we know what's going to happen with these assessments of the houses and the taxes that are going to be burdened here. I think Kennedy took credit for, I don't, they gave Kennedy credit for saying, you know, "You've got to wait until the sun is shining to fix a roof, you don't fix it when it's raining." I believe he probably paraphrased somebody, just like he did with "Ask not what you can do for your country." He paraphrased Khalil Gibran, and if you want to look it up, it's in a book called "The Prophet." But the reality is that now is the time to patch the roof, not fix the roof. The people need a break. The people of this city just can't afford it. We are going to be, you're going to see people out in the street, you know I represent the retirees of this city. I'm the president of the Municipal Retirees Association. The median average of a retiree in the city of Fall River is $22,000. $22,000. Subtract $5,000 from that for inflation, figure out how many medications most of these people take, and I know how many, because they call me up almost every day with their problems. There's a time and place for everything. This is the time for fiscal prudence. This is the time for nothing new. Maintain a status quo and only put money into what we need. This is a budget for the people. The people are supposed to be delivered essential services.
20 seconds.
So I will leave you with a quote, as I always do. You can't taxuate a prosperity, and also what Winston Churchill said. If you stand in a bucket and try to lift yourself up, you're not going to be successful. So we can't do it. The taxpayers need a break. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Nelson Vasquez, address is 210 Sunset Hill. Subject is "Common Sense Budget Option." You have three minutes.
Dear members of the City Council, I come here today feeling yet again that our city is not paying attention to the taxpayers in this critical time for Fall River. I've spoken numerous times about the need for our government to always keep the taxpayers' best interest as our number-one priority. We've heard from homeowners in this chamber, and by email, about the financial storm that Paul Coogan refuses to acknowledge. The fact that everyone except our mayor seems to know we are all in long-term inflation with a deep recession to follow. Yet Paul Coogan's budget ignores not only what we are all experiencing at the gas pumps, or in the grocery store, and everywhere else. What you have before you is a budget full of structural deficits, huge pay raises, and new positions paid for with one-time money. This type of spending cannot be absorbed by the average Fall River citizen. My solution is not to spend without regard for the consequences and impact on our citizens. My solution is a direct challenge to you, Paul Coogan. Back on August 15th, 1971, to get a grasp on inflation during that time in our country, President Nixon issued an executive order that imposed a freeze on wages and prices to counter inflation. This was the first time the U.S. government had enacted wage and price controls since World War II. The city of Fall River is at a critical moment where not only the price for consumer goods is skyrocketing, but the increasing cost of living here will be devastating to the most vulnerable in our city. We need to take bold and decisive action to stop uncontrolled spending. We need to tighten our belt and give our citizens some help and financial relief. That is the only way to save our fixed, low, and average-income citizens, who, for the record, make up the majority of our city. I am challenging you, Mr. Mayor, to do what President Nixon did back on August 15th, 1971. I challenge you to initiate a moratorium on tax increases, new positions, and non-previously-negotiated pay increases in this year's budget. While this moratorium is in effect for one year, the city of Fall River will operate on mostly last year's budget, so that we can give our citizens some shelter from the financial storm they face. Let's not forget that we will be facing structural deficits for years to come, and the last thing we need as a city is a budget that will put us in deeper debt. Paul, you know what's going on in our city. You know that the most vulnerable can't continue paying for your spending spree. With pay raises and water sewer rates piled on the amount of debt created by inflation, property taxes, we must ask ourselves, where will it end? We just witnessed back on May 31st of this year, at a sewer commission meeting, where city residents complained about that stormwater fee on camera. The residents of Fall River need emergency relief. That's why I'm here for the taxpayers, advocating for a solution that has already been utilized in our country's history.
20 seconds.
Paul Coogan, you know what's going to happen to the most vulnerable if you don't initiate what I'm advocating for here today. Developers have come and gone. It's time for you to stand up for the people, and the duty of a government is to save its citizens from evictions, foreclosures, and bankruptcies. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, was there any submitted input?
There wasn't.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the proposed fiscal year 2023 municipal budget presentation. Have the members of the administration come down. When you're all set up, will you just give your name and position for people at home that are watching?
I'm Seth Aiken, the city administrator.
Bridgette Damm, the Director of Financial Services.
Edi Capone, financial consultant.
We're going to.
That's not Fall River?
No, see, palm trees and...
Want me to get the tech thing?
Nope, just one second.
Yes, yes, we did.
We'll take a two-minute recess.
Committee on Finances now back in order.
It's not showing up. I don't know why it's not showing up.
Do you want to duplicate or extend?
No, I can't see my notes.
There we go.
Cool. Yeah, but now I can.
You want to make sure it's on duplicate. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but when I do that, I can't see my notes.
She went to print it.
She's printing a handout right now. I apologize that we didn't have one prepared. But they can be avoided.
Did you put it on presentation mode?
Yeah, and it's like then it blocks.
It's still not the notes.
It's blocking my notes. So sorry for the delay. We all were waiting.
No, we're all set. You can go ahead. If you're all set.
So I wanted to thank members of the council for allowing us to present today. We're having a little few technical difficulties. Sorry about that. This is the presentation of the overview of the 23 City of Fall River budget. And we decided to go with a picture of Derfie since it's something to be really proud of. And it just, you know, they were able to move in this year. So. And then I want to kind of put this quote together. Coming together is a beginning, keeping together is a progress, working together is a success. So a budget is a living document that will keep changing. And I wanted to mention that all of the departments were met. In a collaborative manner, they met with Ed and at the time, the city auditor to go over their budgets and make changes. So. I also, one of the highlights is this budget is prepared to help the city's objective to provide excellence in service to the citizens and continue to move forward for long-term stability. The department operational budgets were proposed with fiscal policies in place to maintain the stability. One of the ways we're doing that is we're utilizing ARPA funds to invest in one-time capital items. This will alleviate the liability in the general operating fund. This is helping us to invest, to enhance our services. At this time, there is no surplus revenue budgeted, no free cash budgeted. And we are using half of the Derfie debt exclusion. It's in the main budget for FY '23. This is a depiction of the debt exclusion as appearing in the FY '23 budget. So this is an example of the median value. So for example, on a single-family house, the cost of the Derfie debt payment at 100% of the debt exclusion would be $133 approximately. And this is based on FY '22 values. By using, pulling out all of the capital items and using ARPA funding, we are able to then put half of the Derfie debt payment in above the line, which is bringing this down to about $65 for a single family.
A year or quarter.
Excuse me?
Can you go back to that screen? Was that a year or a quarter? I really couldn't see it.
That's a year.
A year. Thank you.
So this budget is increasing $24.5 million, of which 18 million is in education. It's going up 2.5% of our tax base, which is about 2.9 million. The debt exclusion is 2.2 million, $250,000. And we're estimating net new growth of 1.8 million. There's approximately general state aid of $492,000. Again, the plan is to use half of the Derfie debt payment to help alleviate the burden to taxpayers. We have mandatory debt service payments of 13.9 million with an allocation of half of the Derfie debt is 4.5 million for FY '23. And we're using a phased-in approach. So part of this is to utilize these ARPA funds to prioritize decisions for good governance. Obviously, we need to comply with all state and local ordinances. We want to ensure transparency on utilizing these funds. And we do not want to create structural deficits by kicking the can down the road and using this for operational funds. We're trying to leverage opportunities and partnerships. We're using all sources of our aid, coordinating with ARPA, FEMA, and grant resources. And we're trying not to reinvent the wheel. And we're looking at what other communities are doing, as well as what didn't work well for them. We're investing in long-term stability projects, urgent health and economic needs. And we're prioritizing short-term investments that will give long-term benefits. In FY '22, approximately 2 million of stabilization funds were budgeted and 3.8 million of free cash budgeted. This year, no free cash or stabilization funds are budgeted. We're doing a conservative approach to build reserves. This is to hopefully help build stability for future years. Again, estimated new growth of 1.8 million. And I just wanted to point out that this is captured over a 12-month period. And FY '22 was presented with capture of a one-time use of 18 months. Our local receipts are level funded and we have union negotiations ongoing. This is just a graph. Because everybody likes graphs to kind of show. So our biggest pie of this is obviously our education. And then the next biggest resource to us is our real estate taxes. This is right out of the budget and it goes over specifically our resources, showing the total general fund resources, our total enterprise fund resources. And so the total available for appropriation is $374,976,691. We have a balanced budget of 374 million. It's increasing about 7% over the prior year. General government, education, debt, insurance, and reserves is 324 million. Our education represents 48.2% of our total general fund. Health insurance contributions represent 11.6% of general fund budget. And retirement contributions represent 11.2% of general fund budget. Public safety represents 13% of the budget. And our enterprise funds are 50.5 million, which is a 1.3% year-over-year budget increase. This is a little bit of our budget overview. So general government is going up 3%. Administrative services is increasing 10.4%, which we can discuss the details of that when we get to that budget. Financial services is increasing 10.1%. Facility maintenance is a small decrease. Community maintenance as well is a small decrease. The enterprise funds are just going up 1.3%. Education is increasing 13.2%. And public safety is increasing 1.3%. Insurance and other is increasing 0.8%. And our retirement is going up 7.3%. These budgetary increases are in line with rising inflation costs, as we all see. And the very sharp increase of escalation on capital items and our utility costs are significant factors that are driving this budget. This is right out of our budget, showing our overview of our expenditures. Again, it's a balanced budget. And this is just showing a little bit more, showing again that our education is about 48.2% of our budget. And showing the next biggest increases are public safety, retirement. And this is just, I wanted to kind of go over the stabilization fund. So as you can see, it had decreased significantly in 2017. And it's been a little, you know, coming up a little bit. And right now, it's at 7.2 million. So again, utilizing ARPA money to help alleviate and help grow this, to stabilize, so that we can build this to a better level that can help us stabilize future increases. I just, questions?
Questions on the presentation? Counselor, seat three, Council Vice President Tion?
Good evening. Could you please go to your Derfie slide?
Madam President, just point of order. So questions are just on the presentation itself?
Right now, just on the presentation, then we're going to go to revenue in each department.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah's passing out a copy of the presentation.
Thank you very much.
I think she meant the debt exclusion. I think.
Oh. I thought she wanted to take a picture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess my first question is, when the taxpayers voted for the debt exclusion, at the time, the assessed value of homes was much lower than it is now. At that time, it was stated that it would be around $115, $120 a year, based on the home values then. So the fact that the number would go up is concerning to me. Because to me, the number should be going down. You shouldn't be paying the same amount for $100,000. You should be paying less per $100,000 so that we would be at the same payment as when the taxpayers voted for the new Derfie. My other concern is the fact that since this vote took place, the tax factor also shifted to the benefit of the taxpayer, which further should lower the payment. So I have trouble believing that the payment should be $133 a year. And that half of it is $65, just based on those facts and those numbers. At this point, a single family, we're looking at almost $300,000 versus 212 when this vote took place. That changes, to me, that changes the numbers. They shouldn't go up. They should go down. So that's my first comment. How, explain to me how you're offsetting the debt exclusion when you say you're offsetting it.
So on the original submissions from departments, there was capital items put in there, like they traditionally do. In order to help balance this budget, those items were pulled out to use our ARPA money. So they're not sitting in the operational budget, which allowed for us to move this up to keep the budget balanced.
Okay, so we're talking about capital improvement projects that qualify under ARPA? Because I wasn't aware that ARPA funding could be used for capital projects.
So capital, like anything that's worth something that will last more than a year. So equipment purchases, the cameras for the police, some of the items that we've talked about in the ARPA money, are items that were in the operational budget requests. Those have all been pulled out, which allowed, by having another source pay for them, it allowed us to be able to do this.
Okay, so that leads me to my next question. Would you say that you've reduced capital item projects to zero?
We've reduced the capital item request in the budget. I believe that they're all pulled out.
So.
Just to clarify, just a little bit. For example, originally, you had, I think, $16 million borrowing requests alone in fiscal '23. So if I borrowed nothing, the only thing you've approved as a council, I believe, is two MSB projects for the school department. If I recite, right, you've approved those to advance. But as far as any other borrowings at this point, we haven't sent any borrowings of any kind. And that's, we all listened to the presentations on regional school. So we're kind of being very conservative. The city administration is being very conservative about the approach to that. The other is, is for example, anything that could be connected to the rules under ABBA, ARPA. You've got to learn how to pronounce it, from Boston, obviously. But my point is, is that they're not just nitty-gritty. They're tied to anything that could be connected to COVID-related, like for example, police cruises is one. And there are a lot of others that have been done. Originally, if the council also remembers, we were going to, we had to, you had an appropriation under, I think, I'm not really sure now. It might have been under COVID funds of some kind, a request of $360,000. We found that that could be eligible. That would have had, that number would have had to been put in the budget. That we're going to pay for out of ARPA funds. That's to do the 10-year inspection of, and you've heard that before, you know, those details. But that's just an example of, you know, to keep things under control so that we could just look at operational expenses. You know, two things. Protect the Stab Fund, review all of the capital needs for the city, and see what's going to be eligible, you know, that we can use. Maybe not every single thing is going to be eligible, but.
So, so, just to get back to my question. Would you say, would it be fair to say that you feel that you reduced capital improvement projects to zero?
Well, I think, so capital improvement projects versus capital expenditures, I mean, so there's equipment and a number of other things that I don't think are necessarily just projects. Would you?
All right, CIP, the Capital Improvement Program. Let's refer to it in the proper terminology. CIP, Capital Improvement Program. Have you reduced that to zero? That's my question.
Yes.
Okay.
At this time.
And I'm going to tell you why I'm asking, I'm going to tell you why I'm asking that question. Okay? According to Section 6.5 in the Charter, "The mayor shall submit a capital improvement program to the city council at least 108 days before the start of each fiscal year." And then it tells you what that has to consist of. And then when you go down to C, which is adoption, it states, "At any time after the public hearing, but before March 1st, the city council shall by resolution adopt the capital improvement program, which may be amended, provided that each amendment shall be voted on separately and that any increase would have to, as submitted, shall directly identify the method of financing to accomplish proposed increase." So it would be my contention, according to the Charter, that you don't have the ability to reduce the CIP to zero. You would have to bring that to us and we'd have to go one line by one line. And we would have to approve those deductions. That's the reason I asked the question.
And to my point of view.
Point of information, can I just, just for clarifying purposes? I think what the administration is talking about is that they reduced all the capital items that were in the operational budget.
That's correct.
You have not reduced the capital request that would require other funding outside of the general fund, right? So there's still capital items that will be coming before the council for bonding purposes that you've outlined, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I just needed clarification on that. Thank you. Let's see. So on page three, under Proposed Budget Summary, it shows Indirects. And in the 2022 budget, Revised, and the 2023 budget, that number is identical. But if you go further into the budget, there was actually an increase of $480,890 in Indirects. So that number actually should not be a 0% increase. It should be a 6.9% increase.
Could you reference, what pages are you referencing again?
I'm on page three right now. And on page 297, you'll see what I'm referencing in terms of Indirects. Indirects being the healthcare. It went up, I don't know if it was 3, 1.3%. But actually, if you add that $480,890 to your Indirects, your Indirects actually went up 6.9%.
Page three and one.
Page three is, and then 297. Because health, dental, and life is an indirect. And it's not there.
I apologize, but I'm really, I'm not following you.
All right, you show your Indirects at $6,990,000.
Yeah, I know that, I got that right in front of me, right.
Okay. Your, in your Indirects, when we get further in, which we're not discussing that, but we are discussing the proposal. It's $480,890 higher than what your indirect shows. Your indirect should be $7,470,926, according to that number, which would be an increase.
Where are you getting that, where are you getting that other number from?
From page 297.
Oh, 297.
I'll tell you in two seconds. That would be health, let's see. Actually, total transfer to employer trust, $37,480,890, which is a 1.3% increase. And then when you bring that over to the Indirects and add the $480,890, it brings it to a 6.9% increase.
Yeah, actually, it doesn't. They're actually two different things. See, the first.
Your healthcare or Indirects?
Well, indirect, depends. When you're looking at the group insurance appropriation and the Indirects that you're looking at in revenue in this particular case are for water, sewer, and EMS. Those were level funded because I believe that the Indirects need a complete review once the fiscal year '22 needs to be, for those three enterprise funds, needs a complete review. And then adjustments will be made accordingly. You know, after the budget process.
But that is listed under Employee Group Insurance.
That's true, but some of that that you're looking at, you're looking at page 297, right? And if you run it down, that is, the Indirects.
So that $6.9 million is the sewer, water, and the EMS Indirects. Add up to that 6.9. The Indirects that you're referring to that are on 297 have to do with health insurance.
Correct.
Indirects are partly health insurance that we charge back the enterprise funds for their percentage of the.
So where are those Indirects reflected in this?
They're not. Well, not in the way you mean. We bring it, see, we bring some of it in as revenue. And those pay for, the Indirects that you're looking at cover retirement costs, health insurance, administration fees for processing, you know, payroll payables for all those enterprise funds. And it needs a complete review. So at the end of fiscal '22, my recommendation has been that they run the actual reports and recalculate the Indirects to make sure that the city and the enterprise funds are being treated fairly. And that's why you see that.
Point of information, just to my colleague in C3. So the indirect costs, you can actually find them on the appropriation orders under the various stabilization. So not stabilization, enterprise funds.
Right.
Individually, you'll see them.
And then you'd just have to add them up.
So then, that would bring me to, if we're talking about the enterprise funds, page nine. Under EMS, Emergency Medical Service Enterprise Fund.
Right, and if you go to P.
On page nine?
Are you looking at the budget summary or the?
No.
The executive summary.
Yes.
Looking at.
Oh, all right, yeah.
Appropriation order.
I'm sorry, I have two summaries in this.
Oh, okay, the appropriation order, page nine.
Yeah.
Says be it ordered that the following FY '22 appropriation, which is clearly is not '22, this is '23.
Right.
So even if we consider that to be a typo, it's the aggregate amounting to $9,500,000. You see that appropriation? But in actuality, it's $9,651,000. So the appropriation is $601,000 under what's necessary?
No. What you're seeing in the EM, for example, on page nine of the EMS, what's coming out of indirect? Part of the Indirects from EMS totals $2,563,195. That's what's being appropriated from, they actually come in as transfers, but really appropriating the money from those, the enterprise fund. And if you go to the water budget, you'll see the same line item. And the sewer budget, you'll see those line items in those budgets. For example, the sewer, you'll see indirect costs of $1,770,000. For example, the sewer, you'll see indirect costs of $1,770,000. And then in the water, you'll see another sum. And those three together add up to the $6.9 million that we're bringing in on the revenue, back in, on, under revenue side. We're actually transferring that money back into the general, back into the general fund. It's a little weird.
I'm sorry, can I just, I don't mean to keep interrupting her. I just want to make sure that Council on C3 is getting.
Yeah, I don't wanna.
Response that she's looking for.
Yeah.
She wasn't, she wasn't speaking to the indirect costs. So she's, she's looking at the appropriation. So if you look at the yellow up top.
Oh, I'm.
So now, she's looking at.
Yeah.
There's a difference between the yellow up top and the toilet at the bottom of the page. So she's looking to see where the difference is. The yellow up top is $9,500,000.
So your appropriation is $600,000 lower than what the enterprise fund requires.
It is unfortunate, that's unfortunate. It is a typo, because if you go to the, if you look at the sewer, it's 26603. That particular one on is, is a typo, unfortunately.
So what's the real number?
9651. $9,651,000.
So the top needs to be changed.
Yeah.
So your appropriation needs to be changed.
Yeah.
So, in theory.
Because if you go to the water, you'll see the same thing for fiscal '22. I don't know how that hap, fiscal '22, it says, you're right, it's a talk.
Yeah, fiscal '22, absolutely.
Sometimes when you look at all these dates and you, you just, they just bounce right by you.
And actually, while we're, we're not there yet, but while we're on that subject of dates, when you look at where the actuals should be, when you're looking at the revised budget from '22.
Yeah.
And then it should say FY '22 through 3/31/22. It doesn't, it says 3/31/21. So that's a year behind as well. So those were kinda.
Yeah. And I, I believe, though, I'm gonna take a quick look. I have in the back here, the actual appropriation orders by the council to see if the numbers are correct. I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to like, I mean, the appropriation number has to match. If it doesn't match, honestly, the budget doesn't work.
Yeah.
So the next thing I'll go to is charts and graphs. I have a real concern with this. Which would be page 19 and page 20. So we have an employee count based on the 2022 fiscal year budget. We don't, we do not have a 2023 employee count. I don't understand how we can build a budget on, on, on numbers from a year ago as opposed to now.
Did you say page, what page, Councilor?
Page 19.
Thank you.
It's under Charts and Graphs is the, is the tab. And if you look at page 19, you'll see the employee count is based on 2022.
So that's showing historical, and we can get an updated one for you as well.
Okay, so my question is, how do you, how do you create a budget not based on actual, an actual employee count? And my, and, and I'll tell you why I ask that. If you look at police, it shows 115.5 is the staffing level. But it isn't. The reality is, the staffing level for the police department is 237. So we're creating a budget with numbers that are completely off. Your total, your total number, whether you're using historical numbers or not, is 668.4, when our actual employee count is 778.9.
So each department, they reviewed their actual staffing levels when they prepared their budgets. This is just a graph showing the historical, but we will get you, I can get you an update for FY '23.
Yeah, traditionally, whatever the fiscal year is, the budget that we're going through, it's here.
Okay.
Traditionally, so that, that's rather concerning that we don't have the numbers to go along with the budget. And, you know, it makes, again, you know, what's the budget based on? If you're basing it on, on employees, it's way off.
So that particular chart isn't used to prepare the budget? That's just for informational purposes? Every single department went through their own, their own employee staffing.
Yeah, because, because the police department's budget is based on 237. Okay, see, I only have a couple more things here. Page 44. Let's see. Okay, we've, that, that's the debt exclusion that we kinda touched on. Yeah, I'm still concerned with that. I, I still think that number's high and, is there any, are there any plans at this point? I know we had this discussion before, but I think we have, need to have the discussion again to break that number out on people's tax bills. Because it, obviously, depending on the value of your home, everybody has a different dollar amount they'll be paying. I think everybody's entitled to know exactly what they're paying towards the debt exclusion, because that number is specifically for the high school.
And we can, I can talk to the assessors office about the ability to break that out on their bills.
I know that in the past, it was said, you know, that's not a huge deal. It might take a little bit of time, but it can be done. And I think for the taxpayers' purposes, it really should be done. I want to know what the difference is between the taxes I'm paying on my home and how much I'm paying for the high school. And down the, down the road, we're gonna have the diamond school. And I think people need to know what these, what it's costing them and what they're paying for each thing. Let's see. I think I only have one more thing at the moment. Oh, no, we're not in this yet, I'm sorry. I was gonna jump to a category. All right, that's all I have right now. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor C4, Councilor Kilby.
Yes, just to piggyback on Counselor Dion's point. I think that should be reasonably easy to do, to calculate from the assessors office how much the increase is. And I agree with her, I think people have a right to know. We just purchased the Patriot, about, what, $360,000?
That's not, that's not the software. The $360,000 is for the, to do their new, the new values to go around.
Oh, for the evaluation, okay. But we're still paying Patriot?
Yes.
Okay, which is very, very efficient, as you must know, at very efficient companies. So that's not a difficult task, not a difficult task.
If you don't mind, my only concern, Counselor, is, is that, and for Counselor Dion, that I'm not aware of too many communities, I'm not aware of any communities in Mass that under a debt exclusion has put a separate line on their tax bill. I mean, this would need some research and probably talk, some conversation with the Department of Local Services to see, you know, whether or not it's, it's an issue or not an issue.
Well, it's just a request.
Because they approve the format of the tax bills.
It's a request on the part of the council, so.
Yeah, no, I know.
We have property values and a percent of increase.
Yeah.
So I don't think.
On the surface, it sounds, you know, like easy. It is, it is a programming change. I mean, you're gonna, the request would have to be put in very soon if you were gonna plan on reprogramming that. And a conversation to be had with the Department of Local Services. They do have approval over your tax bill, you know, that you do send out. But I'm not aware of, of communities that I'm aware of, you know, that have, you know, that have put it out as a separate line item.
Maybe the council or team couldn't allow.
You know, and I'm not aware of any.
I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further on the presentation?
Nope.
Can I, I just want to make one point. You know, I think it's similar to our water bill. On the water bill, you have a base, base fee, you have a meter fee, you have the water usage, you have... So to me, it's just the same, it just goes along the same line.
Yeah, I mean, years ago, they used to put out a tax bill that had a city tax rate and a school tax rate. That old. And they, you know, they did away with that through the Commonwealth. They, they stopped requiring cities and towns to break out the school rate and the, and the general government rate.
I just, yeah, I just think that, I just think that debt exclusion is a little bit different than that. It's, it's something that people voted for, and they're just, just my feeling. And myself as a taxpayer, I just feel people have the right to, to look at their bill and, and know what the dollar amount represents that they voted for. Thank you, with that, I yield.
Councilor C4?
Yeah, I'll be done after this. Forgive me for speaking out of line, out of turn. But that, I think that was the promise made to the citizens of Fall River.
It was.
That that, that was gonna happen, that, that cost was gonna be in the tax bill, just like your rainwater tax, or, so.
The CPA, like the CP, Community Preservation Tax.
Yeah, exactly.
Anything further on the presentation?
When the vote was taken.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. If the administration would like to go through the revenue?
Good. Could you revenue? Let's go.
So.
Yeah.
So, and the revenue's pretty straightforward. Most of it comes off of the cherry sheet. At this point, local receipts have been level funded. Again, we're not using.
On page three?
We're on page three. So again, you can see that there's no budgeted use of free cash. We're trying to protect the stabilization fund. And most of our other resources, again, are being, it's adjusted about 7.3%, but the major increase of this is our education revenues. It's probably one of the largest, I think, I don't, before my time, of education increase. So I don't know if anybody has any specific questions on any of the, the revenue items? Councilor C1, Councilor Kadeem?
Thank you, Madam President. So, just in terms of revenue, and I, I think I may know the answer, but the debt exclusion that you would be looking at would be, so we, we have a debt exclusion in the amount of $2,250,000, right? So that, that's assuming that's 50%. So if we multiply that by two, that's gonna be the total amount that we would be looking if we had not had the Opera money, right? To, to cover capital costs. So to Counselor in C3's original question, we've reduced, the assumption would be that we've reduced roughly $2.2 million in capital items that were built into the general fund. Right, because I, I think that's the line of questioning she was getting at.
The, the theory behind it is, is to try to keep the money in the stab fund until it's, you know, until you need to play these cards out, especially where you do have this diamond project coming on you at some point in time. I mean, I think you need to do a lot of planning in the next couple of years.
No, and I, and I recognize that, but I, I think the statement was that Opera, you know, when we go back to the presentation, the Opera money was saving 50% of the debt payment. So, total for the year, if Opera was not an option, we would be looking at $5.5 million, right? In the debt exclusion item under the real estate tax.
No, 4.5.
I mean, I'm sorry, 4.5, I'm sorry. Yeah. I was just throwing additional million dollars.
Well, there, I mean, there is another piece down, coming down the road. I mean, and that's the rest of the borrowing.
Guys, I'm using my fingers, but is that?
Yeah, and so I think also, I mean, we do need to look at, there's been, the city relies heavily on debt and bonding. And I think we need to be very mindful and conservative because we do have Diamond coming on in a couple of years, and that's a significant payment. So if we can protect it now by using the Opera, the Opera money, it's like all these acronyms, I think that would be the smartest move for us to make. I mean, putting in half right now is a way to help reduce some of the burden to taxpayers. But I think by pulling out those capital items and not using stabilization money and not using free cash and utilizing, you know, the $70 million and then plus the Bristol County money, I think it's the smartest thing, I think that's, and most of, that's what most of the towns are doing. The towns that are gonna use it for operational expenditures, they're gonna have problems down the road. You're literally just kicking the can down the road.
Yeah, and I'm not talking about, I'm not trying to get into a philosophical debate as to whether or not I agree with it. I'm just trying to figure out that that's, if we didn't have Opera, we would be looking at the debt exclusion for the new high school at 4.5 million dollars.
Correct.
Correct, so that, that's in there, so.
So you'd be looking at the full 100% of what we presented.
Right, so going through the budget, we have essentially removed $2.25 million worth of capital items that were built into the general fund.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the, just looking at the real estate, so page 43 I'm looking at, because I know it kinda appears on multiple pages, but the revised FY '22 budget for the real estate taxes was that? That incorporates the tax recap, I would assume? Is there, and I, and I know this is just a, it's really only $35,000, but just the prior year base, so if I look at FY '23, so the prior year base is higher than what the prior year base really was. So if I'm looking at the prior year base in FY '22 under real estate, $117,80287, and then you've got a prior year base on the FY '23, and the number should tie out, 117,835.
Yeah, the.
118?
The Department of, let's see, was the Department of Revenue for some reason. I took that right off the, the sheet that they send down, you know, for the levy limit.
Yep.
And for some reason, they, they increased, you know, the, the amount. And to me, it wasn't, wasn't worth, you know, for 30, for the 35,000, and it didn't make sense to go back and try to do a, you know, a complete review of '22.
Okay. But that's just being, that's being pulled off of.
Yeah. So pull the number, the number came right off of the certified sheet right from the Department of Revenue. So somewhere along the line, there must have been either under on '22, and a correction was made when they, when they sent the sheet down to the city. Because that's the first thing you try to do is, is make sure they're using the right certified number.
Okay. And then on, on page 44, just, I know you talked about local receipts. So essentially, local receipts, level funding, so you're not really seeing any, any increase whatsoever. I guess that's a little bit of a concern, just trying to figure out what we're doing to generate revenues. Just, have we, and I'm, I'm all for being conservative. Is that really what we're seeing, though? We're seeing a flat line in, in local receipts?
No. I, I, my main concern was verifying, you know, obviously, motor vehicle excise is always concerning. Because, you know, you budget it, and then you're hoping you get the right number of commitments and you collect. Right now, they're, they're running good. We, you know, we're covering that.
Yep.
And I also, the other one was.
So do you, do you know, before you go in, just because I was gonna ask you, that's one of the questions. So do you know where we are with the, the actuals, with the big commitment that we got in?
I wanna say it was like 8.3 or in that range. So, I mean, and, you know, we still get the rest of June to collect.
Right.
We had an additional commitment that we were able to collect. And the other one that is real, was really concerning to me, and I believe it was Counselor Dion that brought it up to me about marijuana. That one scared me a little bit, because when I, she mentioned in one of the quarterly reports that, when I looked at the revenue, I said, holy cow. But I did do, have an analysis done on that, and we seem to be doing, we seem to be right on target. And probably coming in a little bit stronger. We didn't build in revenues for, I believe we're bringing on two more. We've got four and five, but I didn't really want to get too far ahead of myself because it takes time to actually see that revenue coming in.
So for the, for the marijuana, the cannabis portion for the sales tax, we're at the 1.65, is that?
Yes.
And then, so we would see another 1.65 for the impact fees? What about, so, and the only reason I ask, because I feel like we're leaving money on the table for the meals and room tax. So I just pulled a report for what we've got for the three quarters for meals. So we already received $1.2 million, so it looks like we're averaging, you know, roughly $400,000 per quarter. So we'd be at $1.6 million. So that's $400,000. And again, if we don't need the revenue, that's, that's one thing, but, you know, it'll come in at certified free cash. But the other one is, is the meals tax as well. You know, we've got budgeted in there $12,000. We're already at $96,000 for the three quarters, so looking at roughly $125,000 for the year, so.
This, this report that I actually ran today had run, shows meals tax, and that doesn't include the, when we, more to come in, we were at about $1,211,000.
Right, 1.2, yeah.
So you can see we had budgeted $1,250,000. Well, I didn't budget it, but in '22, there was $1,250 budgeted, so. We're right, we're pretty much on target so far.
Yeah, I, I guess if, if we get the, that was only three quarters. So we got one more, you got another $400,000 roughly to come in. So that's, that gives you, I guess we're leaving $400,000 on the table. But then if you look at the, the rooms, the room tax, the hotel tax, so we've got budgeted $12,000, we've already received $96,000. So if you're just looking at what you're looking on a quarterly basis, that'd be roughly $125,000 for the year. So we're leaving at least $100,000, so between the two of them, you know, half a million dollars on the table for, for revenue.
I mean, this is, I'm not trying to be, but not having the staffing or the ability to actually go back and try to review every category on fiscal '22, it's a conservative approach to local receipts. Because obviously, as you know, if the city collects more revenue at the end of '22, it would theoretically be more money. We can turn back into.
Free cash.
Into free cash. And also, you could always, before the tax rate is set, leave yourself a little wriggle room if for some reason we needed to, needed some money, we can adjust it. If, one other quick thing, if you don't mind, Bridget, the, in the, in the projections for the state aid, Bridget used the House version. We did not use the Senate version. We're hoping and anticipating a lot, not a lot, but more additional money coming in through the, through the Conference Committee of the House and the Senate, and, which is a good thing.
Okay. And then just in terms of, so two more questions. So capital items, before we started really getting into it, I had, I had a question here with regard to, do we have a list of the capital items that we pulled out that we can see what exactly the $2.2 million, $2.25 million...
We do, but along with that, I don't want to just present a list sort of in a vacuum. One of the things we're doing is talking to each department head, we've already started doing that, in order to submit essentially a revised five-year capital plan that shows what was pulled out, that shows what the priorities are going forward, and gives the council the best, most current picture of what that would look like in the context of the five years as well as the priorities set by the departments.
Yeah, and that's fine. I guess I was just looking to almost check and balance just in terms of the $2.25 million. You know, we're saying we're using OPERA money so that we just have some documentation to say, "Okay, this is the 2.5. It incorporates tasers, you know, five police vehicles, whatever DPW is looking for equipment," whatever the case may be that was, that was originally requested and built in. That may be above the capital improvement, because I don't, I don't know if you captured it in the, in the actual CIP.
No.
If it was, so it could have been above what was in those items, right?
And again, we've, we've met with most of the departments, then, I mean, obviously the biggest, police, fire, well, I'm used to calling it DPW, but we call it something else here.
Community maintenance.
Yeah. So, and we're, they're all reviewing those requests, and we're going to be setting up quarterly meetings, but we've been meeting, and we have meetings scheduled over the next couple of weeks again, because, you know, the world is changing rapidly as we, every day with, so they're reviewing theirs in a much more detailed manner and coming back to us with it.
My last question with regards to revenue, since Mr. Ikponis isn't at the table, I might direct it to him. I think I ask this question every single year, and for some strange reason, the mantra must be kicking in because I can never remember what the response is. So payment in lieu of taxes, the Dartmouth, so it was zeroed out last year, zeroed out this year again, but Dartmouth paid for the lovely ponds that are located in the town of Dartmouth. So we used to get payment in lieu of taxes since we own the ponds, and they utilize it. Why is there no, is it because Ed's a financial consultant, or, that's a joke, I don't want anybody to run with that, we'll have a citizen input statement, but why, why is there no pilot being paid to the, to the city from the town?
What page are you on?
Oh, I'm sorry, page 48. So there are, there are several towns that are located in the town of Dartmouth that are owned by the city of Farver, so...
There's 450,000, are we, payment in lieu of taxes, there's 450,000 in the budget.
But that's for the housing authority.
Right. Housing, Academy and...
So the Academy and building you step...
They didn't get any in '22, so...
No, I know that.
I was thinking maybe they weren't going to get any in '23.
So I'm just curious, and I, and I forget what the response was, but I don't, if we can, I guess if we can look at why Dartmouth's not paying us...
Good point. But I, but I believe, if I recall, because of all the issues of Lake Nokochok, Lake Nokchok?
Yeah, you folks are still using the ponds. I see the boats on the ponds every time I drive by Reed Road and stuff like that, so...
Right. It's not for swimming, though.
No, I know that, yeah.
Very light boating.
I just want to make sure we're getting our fair, fair taxes, that's all, from the town of Dartmouth.
We'll look into it.
Perfect. I yield.
I have a question.
Counselor in seat six.
Just want to ask something to Attorney Atkins. The $2.2 million that we're pulling out, using OPERA money to pull out of the budget on the capital, does that mean that we're not looking? Because I thought there was talk of taking $2.2 million from the school department. Has that been next? I thought it should have been, but...
That conversation is still ongoing. I don't actually, I don't think I'm able to give you an answer on that right now.
Okay.
I think at this point, in, rather than trying to speculate as to what might happen without knowing for sure, we're looking at trying to use OPERA money as much as we possibly can for those capital costs.
But if you're using the OPERA money to cut down on capital issue, or capital things to buy, and you can reduce the debt by 50%, so it's $65 for a single family if it's 271 value, why would you want to get another $2.2 off the school department?
So, why?
So I think that, at the end of the day, as great as it is to try to deliver a balanced budget, it doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, the city is, I know that, that folks in the audience and other folks have used the term flush. That's never something that the mayor ever said, never something anyone at this table ever said. And because it's just, it's not where we are. At the very end of the day, we are trying everything we can do to spend within our means and essentially spend the revenue that we have. And so if there is significant additional funds that the school has that can be used for the benefit of the city, that's a conversation that is going to be had, but it's certainly not any sort of presumption on the part of the city that, that that's going to happen. So I know that conversation's ongoing, I can't really speculate as to what the outcome's going to be.
And some of the money in the water department, after meeting today with the governor and the lieutenant governor, meeting them at Millstone Medical, and the $9 million that's coming from the state, if it passes in the House and Senate, to do a lot of that infrastructure work also will be able to offset some of what monies we would look at spending.
Certainly.
Call your local legislative delegation and push for that vote because we could use the $9 million.
It's important.
With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything on revenue, Counselor in seat three, Council Vice President?
Yeah, I just have one more question. On page four, under reserve, there's $2.6 million in a reserved fund. Can you explain what that money is for, where it's going, what the intention is?
So the reserve, so as you know, we have union negotiations ongoing. So there's funds budgeted in reserves for those union negotiations.
Okay, so none of those funds are going to go towards creating new positions, any raises or anything like that, strictly?
I mean, negotiations.
Well, above and beyond, above and beyond your negotiations, I, those are contractual raises.
So they're...
Like, in other words, there's, there's four, at least four people in this budget that are getting raises this year. So none of that money is going towards those raises, is my question.
No, so what's in the reserves is for the contract negotiations for union employees.
Okay, and nothing to create new positions?
Not in the reserves, no.
Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further on revenue?
No, let's go to Mia's.
Thank you. We'll start the departments with General Government.
Great. Okay, so drawing your attention to page 79 in the budget, beginning with the mayor's office, you can see that overall, it's a 1.4% increase. That increase is largely comprised, actually exclusively comprised of some small raises for some personnel in the budget. There are, of course, four people in the mayor's office, and if you were to compare '22 to '23, there's a small increase for both the chief of staff and the special projects and media coordinator. There is a different admin assistant in that position than there was in FY '22, and she is an AFSMI employee. So her salary is set by her step within AFSMI. Does anyone have any questions about the mayor's budget?
Madam President, can I just quickly, I've, I've got a lot of questions with regards to salary, but if, I can just get a quick update from the administration, I think it might alleviate some of my questions. Can you just tell us which collective bargaining agreements are set to expire? And, because I, because I, some of my questions is there, I don't see any raises for certain groups, so AFSMI, so I would assume that AFSMI is either expired or you're in the process of a successor agreement. So can you just talk to those unions?
The only CBA that is set to expire at the end of this fiscal year is EMS. We actually do have an agreement with EMS, and so there will be no, you know, backtracking. The rest of the agreements have expired, and we're now essentially working without a contract with the majority, actually with all of those. Those, when I say all of those, what I'm talking about are police superiors, police patrol, fire, AFSMI, Teamsters. And then there's two custodians in law. And so with regard to agreements, we have an agreement in principle, but we either don't have a formal agreement voted on by the body or haven't received it yet in order to submit it to the council. Those would be police superiors, AFSMI, law, and EMS. The agreements that are still in the midst of negotiation are Teamsters, police patrol, and fire. I believe that we are likely to have an agreement with patrol and with Teamsters, certainly not before the end of the fiscal year, but soon because negotiations are ongoing and they're productive. With regard to fire, we have recently started up negotiations again because we believe that that, at some point, that would maybe go to arbitration, but I believe that there is a way forward, and I'm very hopeful that we can have some meaningful conversations in the next several weeks. So that's where we are.
Thank you. I apologize for interrupting.
So with regard to at least three, the mayor, the chief of staff, and the special projects, they are non-union employees. The administrative assistant is a union employee. Does anyone have any questions with regard to the mayor's budget?
Counselor in seat six, Counselor...
Yeah, I see on the chief of staff is a CPI, but that's in the contract, that she get the CPI, so that's not a raise per se.
That's correct.
It's just part of what is in the contract. But that brings me to a question of the ordinances that we have and what salaries people make. If unions have gotten increases, sometimes people within those departments in various positions also get a cost of living or a 1%, what have you. Has that been settled yet so that our ordinances are reflective of what people's salaries are? I don't know if the ordinance committee has completed that.
So the ordinance committee has before it a whole number of, of things that will affect exactly what you're talking about, Counselor. There's, of course, the proposed reorganization, and then along with that are the creation of several positions. And then perhaps more importantly and more broadly, there are a number of positions that simply because of cost of living increases have already gone over ordinance. And so the effort there, of course, is to have the positions back into ordinance by increasing what the maximum dollar amounts would be for each of those. So there's a whole list of positions that at this point, the people are being paid outside of ordinance simply because of COLA increases, and what I expect and hope will happen is that once we've resolved those four things, the several new positions, not really new positions, sort of retread positions under the reorg, the reorg, and the positions that are out of ordinance, everything will be consistent again.
Yeah, but we're not even close to reorg yet, so. I just, I just think that, you know, if we have ordinances on the books, just like we have a charter, whether I agree with everything in the charter or not, you have to follow it. So I feel the same way about an ordinance. You expect people to abide by the ordinances of the city, and if we as a body are not making sure that the ordinances are within, you know, all of the, whatever the payments is, I see that as a problem, so maybe that can be worked on. But that's, that's the question I have. I thought some of those had been done. That's it. I don't have any other questions.
Attorney Aiken, can you just clarify? If I'm looking at the fiscal '22 under the mayor's office, so those four positions, the annual salary for the total for fiscal '22, wouldn't that be the starting column in '23?
No.
No. So in FY '22, the total for salaries and wages along with longevity for one employee, holiday, and there were other personnel costs. I'm actually, I didn't look at that to see what that was in '22, but the difference between the 288, 345, and 292...
The holiday.
Right. And '23 is, I believe that there was, we may have, we would have started '23 with the COLA, for some folks already having been awarded several months ago. So the bottom of two, of the FY '22 doesn't necessarily have to be the start of the FY ' '23 line, or column.
So individually, they wouldn't be the same. So, for instance, for special projects, media?
Yep.
At the end of '22 was 38, 296. It's starting '23 at $42,000.
It's a $4,000 raise.
It is a $4,000 raise. I don't know what the timeline is of negotiations between the mayor and the members of his staff. I just know that that's the, the intent for 2020, for FY '23, is to bring up Ms. Pivila.
All right, and would that be the same, so the chief of staff position ended '22 at 85, 292?
Yes.
And it's starting at 87, 131?
87, 131, plus the CPI.
Plus CPI and holiday?
And the holiday.
Okay.
So we're bringing it to 88, 445.
Point of information, that's a $3,106 raise.
Which one are you talking about, Counselor?
Chief of Staff.
Which is in ordinance still?
Which we had changed. I'll wait till it's my turn to speak.
Counselor in seat three, Counsel Vice President.
At an ordinance meeting when we were discussing the ordinances, I had brought up the fact that there are certain positions, two of which are in the mayor's line item for salaries, that theoretically are political positions. The mayors come, the mayors go, and the mayors come and go, so does the chief of staff, so does the specials, projects, media person, presumably. On occasion, it's duplicated, but generally, so it was my contention that those positions should just be offered at a number. You want the position, you don't want the position, because it's not a lifetime career. It's not like other people who have worked in this city for 15, 20, 25 years. So they anticipate raises, they anticipate, I don't know anybody that's been, that's, there's people that have worked here for probably 20 years who don't get a $4,000 raise. So I don't believe it's equitable, I don't believe it's fair, and it's just not something that personally I can go along with, and we had that discussion in ordinance last year. The other thing is, in terms of people being paid outside of ordinance, I could be incorrect, but I believe we also had that discussion last year. I would have to defer to Corporation Council on this one, but I believe the consensus was you cannot pay people outside of ordinance. Whether their salary has increased to that level or not, you have to stay within ordinance. You can't pay them outside of ordinance. You can't pay them more money than what's allowed. And if that is what's happening, that's a problem that we need to fix. With that, I yield.
Well, I do think that HR Director McAlini, one of the first things he did was, was go through and find out where those problems exist, and that was the effort that's in front of ordinance right now, is to fix that and remedy it. So I think we're, you know, certainly haven't been sitting on our hands doing this. We've been trying to fix that issue.
No, I'm not implying that you are. My, what I'm saying is, as long, they have, the salaries have to, and the pays have to stay within ordinance until something changes. And part of the argument was, we're forever changing ordinances to accommodate a situation instead of the situation staying within ordinance until ordinances change. You know, that's like saying, well, maybe next month, the, the state's going to change the speed limit to 75, so I can go 75 miles an hour now because it's going to change. The law is the law. And that's the only analogy I can come up with off the top of my head. So I think that's where I'm going. I'm not saying you're not attempting or trying, or, it's just, it is what it is, and we have to work within the confines of the parameters.
I understand.
With that, I yield.
Thank you. Attorney Aiken?
Are there any other questions regarding the mayor's budget? Are there any other questions regarding the mayor's budget? Moving on to the city clerks' budget, you can see a small reduction in total salaries of .7% and a total reduction of .1% in the city clerk. The majority of costs remain the same. There is an increase in equipment and maintenance regarding the time clock, just essentially an upgrade in the time clock and an ID maker, which comprises an increase of about $2,000. The rest of it, there are no really significant changes. Does anyone have any questions regarding the clerk's budget?
Counselor in seat one.
Thank you. Just, so in terms of, so this is the first department. So I'm assuming that, well, I'm not assuming, I know the clerks in this are an AFSMI unit. So we're going through whatever the cost of living adjustment that's agreed to and that comes down to the, to the council. Are the, is the city clerk an assistant clerk? Because I don't see any cost of living adjustments for them. Are we anticipating to follow suit what we've always done in terms of department heads who might not be on a contract that might outline a cost of living adjustment? Are they going to receive the same cost of living adjustment that AFSMI is receiving?
From what I understand, and as you know, my history with the city is not long at this point. From what I understand, even where a cost of living adjustment may not be articulated in a contract, the majority of folks end up getting a consistent cost of living adjustment with the AFSMI contract. And the AFSMI contract is the one that seems to control. We're doing everything we can to actually have a consistent cost of living scheme across three years for all contracts so that there's no inequity between unions.
Okay.
So I did ask, because we're actually working on what that cost would be for the retros, and they did tell me that the past practice has been to do that.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure. I didn't want to assume. So, and I actually did have a question with regards to the reserve fund, but Counselor in seat three asked it in the revenue portion, which, so I'm satisfied there. So I guess just to kind of circle back a little bit. So that was for collective bargaining agreements, and I would assume non-contractual or contractual individuals that would follow a CBA?
That's the idea.
Okay. All right, and then my only other question was, and I had the, you know, office equipment furniture maintenance line highlighted. The time clock, is it just a timestamp time clock or is it an employee time clock? What are we, what are we talking about there?
So I think it's timestamping documents.
Okay.
So, and that comes with the service agreement, so it's not just the employees.
I seen it first, and I was just thinking about employees.
No, it's, I mean, as you know, it's critically important that when documents come in, they be timestamped, similar to the court clerk's office or anywhere else.
I yield. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions with regard to the clerk's office? Okay, drawing your attention to page 87 in your budget. This is the city council office. The thing I would draw your attention to is in the salaries column for FY '23. We do have a proposed anticipated buyout. One of the clerks is anticipating possible likely retirement sometime in the middle of the fiscal year. So that $22,000 there represents the compulsory buyout that goes with that. Aside from that, the costs are largely the same. Does anyone have any questions with regard to the city council office? Drawing your attention to page 91 of the budget, the elections. And for some of these, if there are questions, I believe we have some of the department heads here, especially where the departments, you know, either have undergone change or there may be some specific questions regarding operational expenses that I'm not as intimately familiar with as I'd like to be. So with regard to this one, the most important thing to note in the elections is that we're looking at the cost of two elections as well as early voting for two elections. So that constitutes the $20,000 increase in professional salaries in order to sustain the cost of that. I believe there's also just a modest increase in building rentals for polling locations. Does anyone have any questions with regard to elections?
Counselor in seat six, Councilor.
With Mr. Lyons taking over where Ms. Susie Young was, there's going to be a vacant position here. I know you have a senior aide, but we also have the senior clerk. Is there looking at doing an extra hire there?
Yes. So from what I understand, Ms. Mello has moved up to Mr. Lyons' position. Mr. Lyons is now the election commissioner, and they are in the process of posting and attempting to hire for the position that was Ms. Mello's position.
Okay. I had concern about that. And also to look at where they're going to have elections, polling places, because everybody seems to be charging more. And I don't know if more schools could be utilized as they are all over the city. And maybe that would be beneficial. Or parking. I know last time the Latrino School, there was a little bit of a snag of how people went in. So I do have confidence in Mr. Lyons, and I'm sure he'll go around and check all these places and get us the best deal possible. With that, I yield.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat three, Council Vice President.
Yeah, I was asking, I'm going to ask about the vacancies as well. So they'll have a complement of four people, or are they going to have three?
I believe that they will have.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be four.
It'll be four. Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you.
Any other questions with regard to elections?
No raise for the council, right?
I'm sorry?
No raise for the council, right? Okay.
Let me see one.
No, we gave that up at nine, see, Chris.
Okay, drawing your attention to page.
Counselor in seat one, Councilor.
Did you, you said the FTEs would be four? Is that what you said?
No, it's three full-time and there's a part-time.
Three full-time and one part-time.
Okay, three and a half.
Four people, though.
Okay, drawing your attention to page 97. This is the veterans' budget. So this one is important. There's a couple of things I'd like to ask you to take a close look at before we get into it. On page 97, you'll notice that in the last major grouping, where it shows no funding for FY '22 and additional funds for FY '23, that begins with training and education. Is everyone oriented to where I'm saying?
Training and education.
Training and education. So first, let me say that the training, education line item, and I can't believe we missed this, was supposed to be 2,500. 25,000 is what came out, which is a really significant difference. Perhaps even more importantly, many of the line items, beginning with training and education and going down all the way to the flags before we get to Pine Street, those were made part of the grouping that's just above it. So dues and memberships down to aid for veterans. This budget, if you look at FY '22, had many fewer line items. And so although it may look like these are new expenses, they are not. They are actually expenses that were pulled out of other line items in order to create additional transparency and clarity for the council to understand where the money's going. I'll also note that in FY '21, the aid to veterans was approximately $1.8 million. And FY '22 went down by approximately $100,000 to $1.754 million, and the proposed for FY '23 is $1.566 million. Now, there's a number of reasons why there's a reduction in the number of veterans and the amount of aid that is going to veterans. And, because I think it's easy to look at that and say, geez, why are we doing less? And so there's, there's, there's three issues here. The first is that there are a number of veterans that during COVID were receiving COVID unemployment that was significantly higher than it otherwise would have been, and then took them out of the threshold for, for receiving Chapter 115 benefits. There was also a COLA increase in Social Security that also increased and would have taken some of them. And I'm not saying this is a widespread thing, but this is, this is a factor for a number of veterans. The COLA increase to Social Security took some also out of the threshold for Chapter 115 benefits. And then there also are, unfortunately, more veterans passing away. When you consider that our World War II veterans could be in their late 90s, up to 100-plus years old, our Korean War veterans, I figure 1950 would be in their late 80s, possibly early 90s. It's really our Vietnam veterans that were servicing the most. So it does seem that every year there are fewer veterans. And again, that doesn't tell the entire story, but it is something that needs to be considered. I'd also ask you to consider that in addition to a number of line items, beginning with training and education, really being sort of re, you know, indicated, re-described costs that were in previous budgets but, but not in the same way, and they're not new expenses. I'd also ask you to consider that there are a number of increases that basically show a recognition of costs that the Veterans Office does incur that may not have been accounted for. And I think the most important one is the DPW overtime. There's an acknowledgement there that there's a significant amount of work that DPW does to support, whether it's parades or other events, preparation of different venues. And so the VSO is attempting to anticipate that those are real costs to the city.
Counselor in seat five, Councilor.
Are you all set?
I am.
Some of the stuff you're saying I have issue with.
Certainly.
You know I work with the veterans very, very closely, and I am a liaison with the War Veterans Council and from the city council. When you talk about a number of veterans that, you know, if they got a little bit of an increase or whatever, that then they couldn't pick up on the other end, let me tell you, that the state said, the state sent something down, that if you had a veteran living in housing, for example, the VSO could cut a check to housing, pay that housing bill. And then the additional from the Chapter 115 money, the additional money would be money that they would claim if they went down for public assistance, and it would make them eligible for other things. All of a sudden now, they don't want to pay that. They only want to write one check to the veteran, and it hurts that veteran for later on. And the other thing that you talked about with DPW, DPW, and I believe Tammy was here, she still is, DPW was always paid through the Veterans Office, and it was an expense. Because quite frankly, the invoice has to come in from Mrs. Natino, from Tammy. That has to come in, and then the city would reimburse. It comes in to the office, and they reimburse with the city. So those two there are off. I don't like a lot of what I see on this budget. I think things have changed. When I look at the trainings, you spoke about trainings, that it's not 25,000, it's 2,500. The state reimburses for training. There are some mandatory trainings that you go to. One is in Leominster, one is in the Cape, they're held twice a year. And the state reimburses the city for hotel, for food, for room, for travel. It's 100% reimbursed. On here, you have an investigator position. There is no investigator. Years ago, you did have an investigator position where someone would go to that veteran's home who was unable to come into City Hall. You would go to their home, and you would help them fill out forms. However, there were issues throughout the state where people would say, veterans would say, they came here to take information, my medication is missing, or something was stolen from the house, or there was something inappropriately done or said. So the state stopped that. So now you have the investigator who is a head clerk investigator. You basically take calls over the phone.
But the position still exists.
It doesn't exist. Who has it? Look and see who has it.
The position, the position exists, but it's vacant at this point.
But you don't need it, so get rid of it. You don't need it. If an investigator's not going to go there, you have a head clerk investigator that's vacant, correct? Correct?
The head clerk investigator is a vacant position.
But you don't need it, because you're no longer doing investigation. And on here, on page 96, you have head administrative clerk investigator, senior account medical clerk, senior account clerk, head clerk investigator, again. But if you look at what the positions are here, the head clerk investigator, that, that could be Mrs. Mata, perhaps. She does it. She's the head clerk investigator now, if there's something. So the head clerk investigator, a salary of $38,000 there, $38,780, plus a travel allowance of $1,560, plus a holiday, you have $40,000 there. Take it out. Because you're not going to hire anybody to ever go do investigations and go to someone's home. The state kind of stopped that. Call and talk to Ms. Poppy up at the state. They, they don't do that anymore. Some of the things that are there, I mean, the training I thought was crazy. $10,000 for outreach. Outreach was this, that Ms. Brito gave to us. This for outreach. This, the Secretary of State Galvin pays for that book. This here, Veteran Service Office, they mail these out to people or send these to people, and this. And a lanyard in there, $10,000. But my veterans didn't get quarters this year. This pen doesn't even say the city of Fall River. Where are we handing these out? Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, I would, I was at every veteran event. I never saw any of this stuff being handed out. To me, it's a waste of money. We have a print shop downstairs. They could be printing things. Flags, on here for flags, what's the amount for flags? $25,000 for flags?
Yes.
You know how much the flags are? 70 cents apiece. You know how many we buy? About 7,000. How many flags we buying? Or are you getting flags somewhere else? We buy about 10,000 flags. At 70 cents apiece, $7,000. So what's that there for? Another one here was the monuments. We worked our tail off on this council. Even the council president, other members of the council, we worked our tail off to get money for the Vet Center.
Are you talking about the fun, the fun match or Pine Street?
We, we did money for that. We also fought for money to redo many of the monuments in the city. You don't want to have monuments in the city and they fall apart. The Civil War Monument, we have to do casting, there's all kinds of stuff we have to do. Plus, to keep up with Iwo Jima, to keep up with the Vietnam War Monument. We had money to do that. We even took money last year, remember? And we put it towards the monument. How much do we have there for monuments? It went from 75,000 this year to 25,000. Why are you cutting on the monuments? We're a city that's known for taking care of our veterans. We have a Veterans Bicentennial Park that people come from all over to visit, to see it. You want to keep it looking good. The matching funds.
Just point of information. There's a lot there, and there's a lot of, I guess, good questions. Can we get the administration to answer one at a time? I'm still stuck.
Yes, our Veterans Service Office is here.
I'm still stuck on the investigator. I mean, is that accurate? Is that not accurate? Are we not hiring an investigator?
There is no investigations going on.
She says you don't need it? I'd like to hear from the administration as to whether or not we need it, and then just move down to the list of other items. I mean, I'm just, I'm just curious. I apologize.
No, I appreciate it. I just, you know, no matter the circumstances, I don't talk over people. I was just raised that way.
No, no, I get it. But before we get, I want to make sure that all the, she's bringing up valid questions, and I just want to make sure that we've got answers to them, that's all.
They're questions. I'd have the VSO come down, maybe?
Sure. Rabbit's going under the table. Are there any investigations going on, Ms. Brito?
Not to the effect that you're talking about now. But what's been happening is, as we're getting new veterans who come in on Chapter 115 benefits, this head position slash investigator goes through and reviews what, all the qualifications for Chapter this head position slash investigator goes through and reviews all the qualifications for Chapter 115. They're the ones who do the intake. And then once the intake is completed, and it has been put into the on-base system with DVS, it's then passed on to whichever clerk covers that portion of the alphabet.
Correct. So that's a head clerk investigator.
Yes, ma'am.
There's not another position of investigator. That position in your budget is vacant.
Yes.
And there is no intention on hiring anyone, because you cannot go out and do an investigation going to someone's home, correct?
No, ma'am. What's happening, so the way that DVS changed it is that they've changed it to say Assistant VSO for a large community. We never, they never changed that as far as the job classification. From what I understand, when my predecessor left, there was a reclassification, not a re, they redid the job description, and it says directly to report to the VSO as their assistant. So.
That's not the investigator position.
That was the investigator, that is the VSO.
No, that one that got brought up was the clerk, was one of the clerks that got brought up.
Judith Motta, who is the head clerk, her title slash investigator, because she's the one who was going and doing that position while it was vacant.
The head clerk investigator would be Ms. Motta?
Yes.
Okay. And that's fine. There is a head clerk investigative position.
And she does half of the alphabet.
There is not an investigative position. Look at page 96. Do you have the budget in front of you? Look at page 96. You're slotted for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 people plus yourself, when really, there's only 5 people plus yourself.
Yes, ma'am, right now there is.
Right.
And when I first took over, there was somebody else in that position, and they've transferred to another portion of, well, the city. And I have not filled that position yet, because I was still trying to get everything under, what's the word that I'm looking for? Under control, trying to figure out how much each person was going to be able to do, how we were going to allocate the different workflows. And the fact that, yes, we are having veterans who are passing away, but we're also having more veterans come back on, and the caseloads are going to be increasing again.
I disagree with that. I think that we're servicing less veterans now than we serviced years ago when I first started here. And over the years, we seem to be losing less and less. And the travel allowance. Let's talk about the travel allowance. What is this travel allowance for? Because... I've never seen that.
Is this the in-state travel mileage?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, didn't that go up? In-state travel went from 3,000 to 7,500. That's on page 87?
97.
97.
And, Councilor, just to correct, we have three trainings a year. One of them is dictated by the Department of Veteran Services, which is fully paid for. For our other trainings, DVS does not reimburse the city on those trainings. Just on that one, for, in Leominster in October, when DVS mandates that, it's supposed to be for all staff members, but of course, we can't close down the office, and whomever would like to attend attends. But the cost of hotels, meals, whatever is included in the registration fee, those costs have all gone up. And so, in allowing.
They've always paid for those costs. When they have them in Leominster, they have it at the Doubletree. I've been there.
Yes, ma'am. And that's the one in October that DVS pays for. DVS pays for one complete training a year.
And the other ones, the SCMA veterans, there's four veterans groups around the state for different places. How often do they have meetings?
We have, the Southeast has three meetings, four meetings a year, with one of them being at our summer conference that we host down in Hyannis this year. And then our other business meetings are within different areas within Southeast, such as, last year, we had one here on Fall River, then in Braintree, in Weymouth, and then our June one will be down the Cape when we have our business meeting.
I'm going to check on that, because they paid for all of that. The $20,000 for parade, the most we've ever spent is 12,000 total. So I don't know where we spent 20,000.
We spent approximately $12,000 on the Veterans Day Parade alone, ma'am. And then for Memorial Day Parade, we paid almost $7,000 to include the transportation for Durfee, Case Band, Bay State Band, Dixieland Band, and the Windjamers, and the Boston Whalers. They're all paid.
And what was that total?
Bay State Band.
Was 20,000 total that you've spent on parades?
Between Memorial Day and Veterans Day, yes, ma'am.
Well, last Veterans Day, we did the drive-by parade, so.
No, we didn't.
The last one, we didn't, oh, no, we did walk it. What do you tell me about the $9,565 that went for monuments?
That was a grant, which was on the, a matching grant that was in there for three years, and it was supposed to come off in FY '21. And it was put in there last year.
It's supposed to continue. As long as we can match it, it was going to continue.
It only said three years on the documentation.
What grant writer did you talk to about that?
I didn't. That's what I was told by my predecessor.
Then we need to talk to the grant writer, because I think that might have been a little bit more. And also on here, furniture and stuff for the office.
Just point of information, just, I guess I'm confused with that statement. So a matching grant, anytime we get a grant, the matching grant's only good for the term of the grant. So the grant, if it was a three-year grant, then we were only on the hook to match for 75,000 for each year. We want to be perpetual until?
9,500.
Correct. But they had reapplied whatever, I was told they reapplied, so it would continue, and it was still reoccurring.
Thank you, I just wanted like clarification, that's all.
I mean, there's a reduction. Another thing that I feel bad, I mean, it's concerning to me. I asked today for the Munis, what did we turn in last year at the end of?
Could you speak in your microphone, Counselor?
Sure. What we turned in last year, and what we have left to spend. Right now, the veterans' budget has a total of 888,761, and that is, that was pulled today. So we have the month of June before this closes out. So they have all that money in the budget. And last year, I think it was something like 750,000.
Yes, ma'am.
That was a turnback.
The handout that I gave you before the meeting started, for FY 2019, there was a turnback of 4,553,949. For FY '20, there was a return of 255,199. For FY '21, it was 750,43.
How many people, yeah, so that means that we're budgeting a lot higher than we need to there.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, let's get a little creative. Let's look at our veterans that, as Attorney Aitken said earlier, many of our veterans are older, they're on pensions, or they're getting 115. Apartment rents have gone up for them. Is there some kind of a program with all this money you have to help some of our veterans? I know they're doing it in other communities. If maybe that would be something you could look into?
Yes, ma'am. And if you look at the other two documents that I provided to.
Excuse me, where are the documents that you're talking about?
They were left on my desk.
She gave them out before the meeting.
Do I have that?
That was in the packet you gave? My handout, yeah. Is that in the packet you had me give?
I thought it was, yeah.
I can give her mine. Just the two pages.
That's it.
You were saying something about the documents?
Yes, ma'am. Those are the two desktop budget charts that are issued to us by the Department of Veteran Services on the fiscal year. For fiscal year '22, the maximum income that was allowable for a single person was $2,147. For a married couple, it was $2,904. This is what's mandated by the state, and we can't go above those allotted amounts. So if somebody is making $2,000 on, just hypothetically, $2,000 on VA disability monies, and then they're getting another $1,000 for Social Security, that puts them over that threshold of the $2,100. For fiscal year '23, the new desktop is $2,265 for a single and $3,052 for a married. They've also increased the amount of money for assets, income assets, to $8,400 for a single and $16,006 for a married. This just recently went up within the COVID time period. Also, on, when you were talking about the turnback of the 750,000, I wasn't here during that fiscal year, but I also turned back when I was in Rainham a lot of money due to the fact that people came off of Chapter 115 benefits because they were receiving pandemic unemployment. Their pandemic unemployment was an additional $600 a week, putting them well over the allotted amount of money that they were going to be giving, because just that alone is $2,400, which, again, that puts them over that asset per month.
And this year so far, you have like 888,000. You have to spend by, within the next, less than 30 days. And so it's still going to be, if you spend 100,000, it's still going to be 788, so you're still going to be in the same ballpark you were last time. And I think that, you know, helping veterans by paying their rent, and the state allowed this, it wasn't like the state didn't allow it, that you cut a check to housing, and then you cut a check to them. Because then when they want to apply for benefits through DTA or what have you, they can do that, and their income is lower, because they have the same structure that you're talking about, a person that makes so much. All of those figures have to do with people that are going to get Chapter 115. This is not every single person that gets Chapter 115. But this could be somebody, this could be a veteran that we're helping. I spoke to a woman veteran at the Vet's Kitchen the other day, and she got hurt by not paying housing and then giving her a check. She lost food stamps, and that was important to her. So that's not helping. I wish that you would go back to doing that. The other thing, and there's more that I could get into, but how many people are collecting Chapter 115 now?
Senator President, can we just get a response to that statement? Is that true? I mean, have we changed the way we're making payments?
No. I'm still making payments according to the 108 CMR, which is issued by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Each veteran, as you know, from working with Ms. Leflam and CCONC, there are certain veterans who are with transitional housing, where a check can be cut to that landlord. But that doesn't mean that the veteran turns around and gets additional monies. If a veteran's getting, say, $1,800 a month on Chapter 115 benefits, we can cut a check to their landlords for, say, their rent is $1,200. We can cut that check of $1,200 to the landlord if it's deemed that the veteran or the surviving spouse cannot handle their finances to do that. The remaining amount of money is then given to the veteran. You can't give them both. You can't pay for somebody's rent on a monthly basis and give them the full amount of the benefits. It gets deducted from the full amount of the benefits.
No one absolutely was saying that. If whatever the full amount of the benefit is, you take money from that benefit and pay, let's say, the Housing Authority. Because now the check that they get, the portion that they get back as a benefit, if they want to go and apply for food stamps, they can, and they will be eligible. And it was at a meeting, and I read an article on it, where the state agreed that that would be beneficial to veterans.
Chapter 115 does not count as income when somebody goes for DTA.
Other monies do. And if you are receiving it, no matter what, if you are receiving it, you become ineligible. So I beg to differ.
Ms. Brito, is that accurate information that the counselor is speaking? I'm asking if that's accurate information.
Yeah, it is.
I'm asking Ms. Brito, if you'll let her answer.
Chapter 115 benefits are considered a stipend to assist our veterans and their surviving family members. It's monetary monies that are given to assist them with everyday cost of livings. It doesn't count when you're going, it shouldn't count when they're going towards housing. I was informed by our Housing Authority that it does for federal housing, but not for our local housing. And also for, you cannot receive both transitional assistance and Chapter 115, because they're both state aid.
Thank you.
First of all, the housing that we have in Fall River, some of the developments are state, but the majority are federal, therefore, it would qualify. And as long as, they don't care where you're getting the income from, but whatever income you're getting is on transitional assistance. The other thing is, how many, how many cases do you have now of people on Chapter 115, on average?
Right now, we have 184, because we've lost many veterans due to the fact through.
Getting older.
Getting older and passing away. The fact that we did have a lot of veterans who were on Chapter 115, and with the 5% cost of living increase, even if they were only getting a little bit of money from us, or having us paying their insurance, their gap insurance, or their regular policies, they came off because of the fact that they went above because of the cost of living. And you were correct, that we did receive a stipend from the Department of Veteran Services. That was paid out totally separate, had nothing to do with our regular Chapter 115 benefits. It was paid, and we received it in March, after we had already processed our checks for the month. So in April, we gave them the payments from January through April, and then we gave them their monthly benefit with a stipend in both May and June. Our checks on, part of the monies that we're still waiting to come out are the payments that we just did for our June benefits, because those have not come out of our budget yet, because those checks are just now in the process, being processed. Additionally, we have other medical bills and the health insurance. Everything's still in the process of being paid, and it'll be paid out by the end of the, by the end of the month.
When somebody collects Chapter 115 monies, additional monies to help them, those have to get certified at the end of the fiscal, at the end of each month, and there's a 30-day period to submit them for certification. Correct?
90 days. You're talking about, you're talking about each month when we finish closing out our month, depending upon how long it takes for our authorizer to finish authorizing every single case, whether it be something for a prescription or a medical procedure. Every, every entry that we put in needs to be authorized by the Department of Veteran Services. So as soon as we close out a month, whenever that might be, we just closed out January and February, due to the fact that they had difficulties with the new system and how they can't just go in and certify a whole entire community. and how they can't just go in and certify a whole entire community. Whatever date that entry was made, all those entries from whichever communities, say, we put in something on January 6th, and then we put more in on January 8th, January 10th, whatever comes in on each of those days, that's what our authorizer is going in and authorizing now, instead of being able to go out and say, "All of Fall River is there, and I will certify all of Fall River." So it's on a date process now. With that being said, a lot of times we enter things into the OnBase system, and it doesn't get authorized. It could be six, eight weeks before it gets authorized. Once that's done and we have no disallowances, then we can close out the month. In order to get our funding back, we're backdated between 12 to 18 months being reimbursed by the Commonwealth for our monies coming in on Chapter 115 benefits. For every dollar we pay out, we get 75 cents back. On our burials, we get 100% back, and on our flags for graves, we get that money, 100% money back. And back to your comment about the $25,000 for flags, we also purchase 3x5, 4x6, 5x8 American flags and 2x3 and 3x5 POW flags for all the Commonwealth, for all the municipal polls. And our flags and graves officer is the one who goes around and replaces the flags. And at our half-staffs, he either lowers or raises the flag for every half-staff notification that the city gets.
That's fine, but you put $25,000. I know it's $7,000 for flags at 70 cents. You didn't spend the rest of the money. You could buy flags for every place in the city. You wouldn't have spent that kind of money. It's too much in that budget. But going back to the Chapter 115, normally, because I've checked these things before, and normally, a month ends, there's 30 days, it's submitted, now it goes to Mr. Shakney, it's certified, and then we get it a year later. But when we have July of '21 being submitted in September, we're not going to get that till September. We're not going to get it for July. When we have August being September 28th, when we have September going in in November, when we have October going in in January, November going in in January, December.
Ms. Brito, would you like to respond?
Going in in January.
That's 90 days.
And now February.
That's 90 days.
And January, February, we just put in May 19.
Ms. Brito, would you like to respond?
Yes, ma'am. June of last year, DVS transitioned over to a new system in the virtual gateway. It's called OnBase. There were issues with, A, everybody across the Commonwealth learning the new OnBase system. There were also system technical difficulties. We did not get input for our recertifications until, I was not here for the city of Fall River, but I will tell you how it was in Rainham. I did not finish getting everything in due to the fact that we're having so many issues with the new system. It was supposed to be up and running by the first week in June, and it was still not running until the middle to late June of last year. As I was saying, every single, when you put something in, it gets authorized per the day that it goes in. So if something went in on June 1st, it wouldn't have gotten authorized. Everything that got put in on June 1st would get authorized. Then if you put something in on June 8th, that's when it would get. Whatever the tally date that the authorizer gets, that's what's going to be authorized per those days. We can't have them go in and say, "Okay, you have 50 cases that are still pending to be authorized, but there are other communities that are also waiting for authorization on their claims, too." We can't close out months until our authorizers go in and approve or disapprove or send it back for modifications. We can't close out the month until that's done, because if that's not done, then we lose money on our reimbursements coming from the Commonwealth.
That's exactly my concern, on losing money on what is authorized. Because if you put something in that was due in September, October, and it's not in there till January, then that's going to be the authorization date in January. That's the date that they'll go to. So we're going to wait till January versus waiting till October.
No, ma'am. Even though we closed out the months within the 90-day time period, we still get the money at the same time that we would have gotten because DVS is anywhere between 12 and 18 months behind in giving our reimbursements.
Funny, never happened like that before.
Point of order. I gotta be honest. I appreciate, if we're going to advocate for the veterans, let's advocate for the veterans. But we've just been here for an hour, and I feel like it's in a direct act at our officer, right?
I'm not trying to be.
Excuse me, we never questioned Ray Haig. Ray Haig would be down here for two minutes, okay? It has always been the case that we've been 12 to 18 months behind on reimbursements, okay? Have we lost any money? I don't understand what the counselor is asking for. Is she asking for more money? Is she asking for less money?
She's not asking. She's just making statements.
The administration can't even answer a question, legitimate questions. We're talking about 7-cent flags versus, and completely ignoring the fact that we're getting larger flags. I just, I want to know. My question is, what can we do to help the veterans with benefits? Should we be lobbying the state legislature to increase the allowance, whatever the case may be? I'd just like to get to some budgetary questions.
I think part of it would be to give veterans more money, veterans giving them quarters, maybe looking at rent, because rent is a real.
But Counsel, you're making statements, and the VSO, who is highly educated in her job, is responding to you, saying, "That's not correct." And she's laying out detail for detail. So I'm speaking. She's laying out detail for detail on why it's not correct and explaining what the process is. And then you're saying to her, "No, oh, I'm going to double-check that." I'm into this. Let's talk about respect for our department heads, because this has been ongoing for, what, a year now? And enough is enough. We want all of our people at Citizens Input to come and not say anything bad, but we're going to attack a department head, and it's very obvious.
I'm not attacking. I'm asking her questions.
And you're not letting her answer, and then you're not taking her answer.
Point of order, point of order. I don't see anyone attacking anyone. I see a disagreement between how the money can be spent, to be honest. But we can move forward. We can keep going with the conversation and just keep answering the questions as they're being asked.
Do you have any further questions, questions, Counsel Pura?
No, I just would say that I think if we could look to help with rent and give people money for quarters, I think that that would be helpful to all of our veterans. Because when we got rid of the Armory, there was an agreement made with then Mayor Lambert, and I think that that should be followed through. With that, I yield. Thank you.
If I may, very briefly, there is $10,000 for quarters in the FY23 budget. I think it's important to note that. And then in addition, noting that the Pine Street line item, which is just below the flags at the very bottom, does show a reduction from $75,000 to $25,000. That's not just Pine Street. It's also Memorial Park and the Vet Center. However, that is part of the effort to not use one-time money. That $75,000 has been in there for a couple budget cycles. And I think the key is that Pine Street really needs more than just $50,000 or $75,000. It really needs a significant investment, and I think ARPA money is a great way to do that. It's already received windows and some flooring and other things, but it needs to be brought over the finish line. And so you can anticipate that over the next several weeks, whether it's through county money or whether we do it through city ARPA money, there is going to be an ARPA proposal that I hope if it does come as county money, you'll support for a significant infusion of cash into Pine Street to make that a place that's suitable for our veterans, who I've really had the pleasure of getting to know a little bit since I started, and really pretty remarkable group of men and women. And I'm proud to have served, maybe not in always the same conditions, but at least in the same uniform.
And we can't use any of this money, the $888,000 that we have in there now?
Well, I don't think we can take money that is in this budget and, you know, sort of throw it back to the next budget since we have a month left. There was the $75,000 from FY22 that was put towards Pine Street. That was part of that line item. I don't think we can start shuffling around money at this point. But there is a commitment by this administration to investing in Pine Street.
Counsel, Vice President, do you have?
I'm going to go out on a limb. I'm going to say that I believe everybody in this room agrees on one thing. Under training and education, there was an era in the dollar amount of $25,000, which should be $2,250, I believe?
$2,500.
$2,500, okay. So I am going to make a motion that that line item and the veterans under general government be reduced by $22,500. That it also be reduced under appropriations, and it be sent to full council for a vote, just to correct it. And I'm only making the motion now before I forget. And with that, I yield.
Counselor in seat one, Counsel Kadeem.
Are you going to take the motion, or?
Can we do it? Do we have to do it full council?
Point of order, second. I totally agree with you, but is it appropriate to make that motion now or when we take a vote on the budget? The way we vote, lying by law.
I would defer to cooperation, counsel. Is it appropriate to make that motion now, or do we have to wait?
It's best to do with the full city council.
Well, I'm sending it to full council, but making the motion to send it there.
It should be voted by the full city council.
I guess my question would be, just point of order, my question would be, are we making a recommendation to full council to approve the budget? If so, then I would say that we would make the motion now.
To approve it? No, she just wants to reduce that line item.
No, no, I get that. If we, as a finance committee, are going to make a recommendation to full council, even though we're full council, to either approve or reject the budget, if that's the case, then I would say that we would need to entertain the motion. If we are just hearing the budget and not referring any recommendations, because typically, out of committee, we make recommendations to the full council. So if that's the case, then I would say that we would need to entertain the motion now so that it.
It's in full council.
Right.
You have a point of order, Counsel?
Yeah, I mean, listen, he said typically we make recommendations. Typically, sometimes we don't make recommendations. We just refer to the full council on a routine basis. It doesn't matter to me whether you want to vote for it now. We're all going to agree it's a mistake. So obviously, why are we going to leave a mistake in the budget? Whether we do it now or do it later, it can be done in full council, even if the budget is moved to full council with the recommendation of approval, which I don't think is going to happen. I just think it would be referred to the full council to discuss and vote on it. But we all get it. It's a mistake, so we're going to fix the mistake. We should do as much as we can to help the veterans.
So the reason I'm making the motion is because it's my understanding, we're not going to go into full council unless there's a reason to go into full council.
Who gave that understanding? I don't understand where that come from. How can we not go into full council?
Because you can have just finance and adjourn and not go to full council.
Therefore, there'd be no vote. We're willing to take a vote, correct?
We have to go to full council for a vote on the budget.
You can make the recommendation at any time. It doesn't have to be tonight. We can do it all at once at the end. Or you can do it now. It's up to you, Counsel.
Whatever the will of the council is.
Well, I disagree. So if we're going to take a motion, I'm going to disagree. So I guess if you're not entertaining the motion, I got the floor.
Was there, there wasn't a second?
No.
Brad seconded it.
He just seconded it now. You want to second it?
It's semantics, yes. We're going to make the correction, but you can give a recommendation to.
My choice would be to do them all at one time. We need to change the appropriation as well.
I would in full council.
And EMS.
Withdraw my second.
Are you looking for something, Counselor?
I am. I'm not lining it, but I will.
Counselor in seat one, Counsel Kadeem.
All right.
Let me know if you find it.
I guess what I would say to the motion, and the reason I would reject it, is because we just heard that Pine Street needs money. So I would say that just, as opposed to reducing the budget, which is, I'm assuming is a balanced budget, we keep it in there with the understanding that $25,000 is going to be set aside for improvements for Pine Street. Right? So why, that's just my take. I mean, we're talking about trying to get more monies to the veterans. So I will just throw that out there, and whenever we entertain the motion, that's where my mindset's going. In particular, to the budget, so the DPW overtime, the $25,000, how have we handled that in the past? Where did that money, we've always provided services, or at least community maintenance has always provided services for parades.
So when I opened up the presentation, I had said that there was a number of things that were kind of shoehorned into more general categories. So my understanding is that there was DPW expenses, but they were never called out. They were never clearly articulated in the budget. They were just part of either aid or something else. So this is a way to acknowledge that, to say, "This is the cost, and we know what the cost is going in."
So, but they were being charged to this department and not community maintenance?
I believe they were, but I'm also fairly certain that they weren't all in the same line item. There was different ways they were kind of chopped up, which just wasn't clear.
And the only reason I ask that is because I just don't want to, I wouldn't want to spend $25,000 if we can use it elsewhere if it was being accounted for in community maintenance, right? So I'd rather just increase that overtime budget if that's where, you know, the service is going to be provided, and just have the $25,000 for other benefits for the community.
Counselors, the other counselors can't hear.
So, but you're saying that it was directly charged from this?
Yes, sir. We would get, in our office, requests to transfer funds, say, from my department into
Tammy's.
Tammy's Department for use of Dave on overtime, whether it be on the weekends or at night for events. Or, again, utilizing CDM, no.
DCM.
DCM, sorry, all these acronyms. DCM for the parades or any of the other. But also, we've taken into consideration that there is a possibility that that money will have to be increased even more due to the fact that now that we can no longer use auxiliary police, that we will have to assist with overtime within the police department for some of these events.
So can you just clarify, when you transferred it, what expense item was it taken out of in the past budget?
It's been taken out of different line items. Sometimes it's been taken out of the Veterans Aid line item, but I'm not able to go back and verify from all of them. I've only been here in this position since September, and from what I understand, I have gone through and we have taken it out using the Veterans Aid line item since I've been here, just so that it would come out of a consistent line and that it wasn't jumping around from one line item to another.
So it was charged directly. It wasn't a transfer, right? So it was a direct charge to the.
I haven't gone back, counsel, but as you know, if it came out of expenses in veterans and went to DPW overtime.
It would require council approval, right?
It would require council approval.
And we haven't done it. We haven't had any transfers for veterans. That's all I'm saying. So it's probably, so one of two things can happen. It's obviously charged directly to, you know, the AIDS benefit or whatever line it is, or it's charged directly to DCM for their overtime. I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure we're not spending $25,000.
Twice.
Right, if it's included somewhere else. You know, I'd rather free up $25,000 than now we've got $50,000 for Pine Street. Look what I found, but, so, yeah, I guess if we can just clarify that.
Originally, I'd put it down under expenses, and then I was told that it needed to.
Tammy, can you clarify it?
Yeah, no, yeah.
If you want.
But in the absence of any transfers, I mean, whether it's this 22, I haven't seen it. I looked at all the transfers in 22. I didn't see any.
Can I make a motion for Tammy to come down, and she could explain this?
Yep, she's here.
Is there a second?
We're in finance. She can come down.
Tammy would do the invoice, and then it goes to the general fund.
Here, take mine.
Does it have departments a little confused? Okay, so I'm facilities maintenance. Community maintenance is a separate department. So I do charge them overtime for facilities, and I have records of any transfers that we've asked for. So I could get that together for you for last year. We're still working out this year because we just had Memorial Day Parade weekend, so I haven't put that together. But I don't know what community maintenance has done. I just know what facilities has.
So what have you done? You've charged them directly for, so let's just say there's $5,000 in overtime for facilities. You would charge that department directly, so as opposed to hitting your organ object, it would go to veterans' organ objects?
Correct. No, what we do is we ask for a service transfer, because that's the way the previous director preferred it to do. because that's the way the previous director preferred it to do, done.
But listen, if we, if we wanna talk about what this director is doing versus the other director, I would tell you that's in violation of council, so, you know. Kudos, we're one for one on what people should not be doing. All right.
That's just the way that's been, and in other departments that we've charged, we do put their account number directly.
Yeah, as long as somebody, as long as somebody's taking a tally of, you know, what the prior director did versus the, the current director, I'm good. So we're one for one, we're tied, okay? So moving forward, we're, we're gonna figure out where we're going, and so we're gonna leave the 25,000 dollars in here for overtime, it's gonna be charged directly to this account.
This is a first step in trying to do it correctly and transparently, and whatever's been done in the past is.
Past.
The past.
Thank you, um, so just automobile allowance on the.
Just a, a point of order, when you talk about DCM, Tammy's right that she's facilities. What the Veterans Office uses is facilities for putting up chairs and separate events and things like that, not so much DCM. DCM was only used to pull down the wreaths that were put up at Christmas time, so there may be two. But you fall under DCM?
No, I fall under facilities. And to my understanding, I believe that DCM is starting to charge for their services as well. I don't know what was done under the previous director over there or the current director. I'm sorry, however you want to address that, but to my knowledge, from what I hear, is they're going to start doing exactly what we've been doing for, for a few years already.
I'm all for, I'm all for just making sure we identify the cost and, and have it in a consistent place, so we know how to budget it moving forward, right? So especially if we're doing zero-based budgeting, we wanna know what cost center it's gonna be charged to. So I'm good, good with that, I just wanna make sure that we're not double counting. You guys can figure out, you know, the mechanism internally.
We have a line item specifically for events.
That you charge.
That's how we keep track of it.
Mm-hmm, okay. Me personally, I like to see DP, DPW, uh, I'm sorry, community maintenance and facilities keep their overtime and broken down for parades and events, and then obviously.
So I have it, I have mine.
Okay, so we're adding more, but if this is the way it stays, it stays, I just wanna make sure we're consistent on, on how it is.
It's the best way for us to be transparent as.
No, I, I agree, I agree, it's just, yeah, I'm, I'm not arguing with that.
No, I didn't think that, I was just clarifying.
Just in terms of the automobile allowance, can you just speak to how we came to that determination on? And I guess when I originally, when I was looking at it, I seen 6820, and I, I didn't go to the, shame on me, I didn't go to the salaries page to, to see the auto allowance breakdown, but are these contractual for the individuals that are in? Well, I guess there's two individuals that are not in the union, but two individuals that are.
So if you look at FY22, you see that there were 4,320 dollars worth of automobile allowances. Those can be attributed to um, the two employees who are not the Veterans Agent. So Makyla is the 2,500, the other two have the automobile, I'm sorry, the three have the automobile allowances. But of course, there's the vacancy for the, the head clerk investigator. Part of Ms. Brito's employment package was an automobile allowance that was negotiated.
Okay.
Um, and so that's the addition for FY23.
Okay, perfect, that's, that's fine. Um, and then, I know we talked a little bit about it, but I, from, just for my own clarification, so when I, when I'm looking at, I guess, the middle of the expenses here, the medical and surgical, the hospital for vets, and then you've got the ambulance burial vets, you've got the vets, um, the graves and the quarters, and then you've got the aid to the vets. So there's changes there, so I just wanna make sure that we're covering everything that we absolutely need. So if I take medical and surgical and, and the hospital for the vets, that's roughly 210,000 dollars. Is that going now, getting rolled into that 295? When I'm looking at FY22 to FY23?
Yes.
Okay, so there's an increase of roughly 85,000 dollars that, that's going in that. And then, the ambulance, the, the vets, graves and the quarters, and the aid for the vets are falling down below, which you highlighted, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So those are new object codes that I had our previous auditor create, so that, again, for transparency, so that I would be able to account for in a more efficient manner.
And then, uh, you know, the counselor had, had mentioned in terms of your travel being reimbursed, obviously, it's reimbursed, so we've, we've gotta put a dollar amount in the, in the budget to cover the cost, right? So that we can get the reimbursement?
For regular training, though, when we go, um, there's two times a year that we go to Lomond St. and one year that we, one time that we go down the Cape. The training in October by DVS, all we have, we make the reservations, DVS pays for it. For the ones that we do as the NVSOI with training, that's out of our budgets, that we have to fund it, but that does not get reimbursed by DVS.
Okay. And then my, my final question was just in regards to the federal poverty level, the FLP, and the, I guess, benefit limitations under 115, is there anything that we can be doing as a legislative body to try to increase those benchmarks? Because obviously, cost of living adjustments, things like that, are really impacting some of the veterans and kicking them out of their eligibility. Is, is there anything that we can be doing as a legislative body to try to advocate to get those numbers increased? So that we can have more.
Probably the federal government, so that they can. That's, 'cause that's the federal poverty level, it has nothing to do.
I just wasn't sure if we could do something at the state level with 115 benefits, things of that nature. But listen, I'm, I'm, I'm good with advocating for the federal delegation as well, they just don't listen to us as, as.
Exactly, but no, that's all, again, it's all mandated through their exact funds. I mean, they're going, they're changing the way that we recertify, so it's now no longer in January for them to turn around and boot people off. So we'll be doing it in July now, so that way with the cost of living, you don't have somebody on for half a year and then be told that they're no longer on it.
And then, um, this would be more in line for the, the administration to answer, just in terms of taxes, real estate taxes, have we, have we voted, we, meaning the city council, voted on all veteran exemptions that are out there in terms of general law that we can accept to kind of have exceptions? Or maybe, maybe you can answer that, so.
Yes, as of right now, um, the last, I believe it was through Home Act Two, was the local option for the Gold Star Parents.
Yeah, which we just approved.
And that was just approved, and, but with anything else, it's not, it would all be local options, so right now, I believe it's 400 dollars for 22A. We can, as a community, can say that they're gonna double it, or even go up as high as, say, a thousand dollars. That's all a local option, but still only get reimbursed for that mandated from the Commonwealth, so you'd only get that reimbursement for the 400 dollars.
Okay, and it's, and it's a shift of the burden anyways, you're shifting it to, to another taxpayer, right? So, okay, I just, I just wanna make sure that we're, we're utilizing all the exemptions that we possibly can. You know, I know we need to take votes on general law to, to allow some of those to take place, I just wanna make sure we're doing that for the veterans.
Yeah, most, and again, most of it's through mass general law.
Okay, perfect, with that, I yield.
Thank you, counselor in seat eight, counsel Washington.
Hi, thank you, so um, City Administrator Akins, you answered some of my questions. I just wanna kind of piggyback on that, with the 75,000, I think a few years ago, council president put that in the budget for Pine Street, added in, we have a state-of-the-art, beautiful wall down there. When I looked at the budget, I just received the budget in my long tenure here, but I was a little taken back by the 50,000, I think we had talked earlier, taken out of the budget. I don't understand the justification for that, because this weekend I went down to the Pine Street, and I know that you said that we gotta bring it just past, but some work has been done. But I, you know, I know that you said some work has been done, and I seen that, you know, the, there was some flooring done, but was not finished, I mean, where the DV, Disabled Veterans of America meet, their floor is still not completed, and there they are, these men in there with their canes, with carpets in there and, and tattered rugs, I, I think that, um, I'm glad to know that the 25,000 dollars was just a typo, so um, back to what counselor Dion was saying, you know, if you make a motion, I don't know how that, you know, if you could put that in there, or counsel Kadim had said it into that line item and, and bring it back up there, but it is very concerning, that building, yes, some work has been done, there are some windows that were put in there, but the basement windows, I mean, there is big, big issues, and so my thought is that that money should never be touched, that, what, the best thing we can do for our veterans is to give them a place to go and make it attractive for the younger veterans that you're saying that are coming in, so. I just, um, whatever we can do to keep that money there is great. I think you answered a lot of my questions that I had earlier about this budget. I do, the travel budget seems high, it really, really does, I think I'm a little bit confused, and maybe you can give me some clarification, 'cause we're talking about interstate travel with an increase of 4,500 dollars, and we're mixing that in with the training that were in conferences that we're going to, that we just said we have 2,500 dollars, and so I, we're, there's like a mix match, so is there an interstate travel of 7,500 dollars now? And does also the trainings come out of that? 'Cause I think we're mixing the two around, so I, I, I do feel that that is, 7,500 dollars is high. I'd like to see why it's so high, um, that cost, because if we're talking about conferences, then we're gonna add on the 2,500 dollars onto that. So it does appear high, and, and I guess what I'm saying is if we can cut the fat anywhere and give it back into our veterans and, and serve them, I think that's the best thing to do. But you did answer a lot of the questions that I had, so with that, I'll yield.
Ms. Brito, do you wanna answer that again about the interstate travel and mileage?
Can you repeat that?
Do you wanna answer that again about why that's 7,500, the in-state travel and mileage? There's one conference that's reimbursed, and there's three others that aren't reimbursed.
There are two others that are not reimbursed, plus we have our business meetings that we attend on a quarterly basis. I'm also on the executive board for the Massachusetts Veteran Service Officers Association, and I do go to those meetings, those are on a monthly basis, but for those, we have been doing them mostly by Zoom, it just started back in person. And before, like you were saying, a lot of it was virtually.
Yeah.
So we didn't have to pay out those different costs, but now with the, the increase in hotels, with the hotel taxes and whatnot, that's all gone up, and the, also, the mileage, the amount for mileage has gone up also.
So you would take that out of, instead of taking that in your budget out of trainings for the conferences, you would take that out of interstate travel?
For the hotels and that portion, yes.
For the hotels, so.
For training.
So historically been, I'm new here, his 3,000 dollars has been enough to cover the conferences? Because it's not that it's just all of a sudden, you know, one is reimbursed and the others are not, it's just always been like that, Mike, I'm correct, right?
Yes.
So there's a 4,500 dollar increase to those conferences, is what you're saying? So it's about a 4,500 dollar increase, what's happening right now with those conferences from past years?
It's not just those conferences, that's also including, like, reimbursable mileage, and so, again, just as you, this is my first budget.
Yeah.
So, what we wanted to do is we want to be able to put the amount of money in there and not have to go in and ask for.
To take it out of some.
To take it out of someplace else, or.
Yeah.
So I'd rather, we'd rather have that money there than not there.
Well, thank you for your, your service, I wanna say that, Makyla.
If I may briefly.
Yeah.
I also think one of the differences, and I could be wrong, please do correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that, um, in the past, there had largely been just one person attending trainings and conferences and meetings, and now, because the, the requirement is really that the entire staff is trained, what Agent Brito is trying to do is get as many of her staff trained at these different conferences as possible.
So you bring a good point there, because I get it, you're trying to run this with fidelity, do it the way it's supposed to be done, but your staff is union. You, is, they're a union, so can you force them to go to these trainings? I, I mean, are they willing, so I guess that just brings up a whole nother, a whole nother question.
So it's not a matter of it being like me forcing them to, that's, it's stuff that's mandated by the department.
So they have to go, so it does, so they're not gonna say, I'm not going to this training, I'm gonna need an increase, and it's not part of my contract, they have to go to these.
It's part of their job description.
So the 4,500 dollars is because now your entire staff needs to attend these trainings, and you're running the department with fidelity. Okay, fair enough, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you yield, counselor?
Yes, I yield, thank you.
Counselor in seat two, counsel Kamara.
Thank you. I have a question, if we're talking about fixing up Pine Street, why wouldn't we use American Recovery money for that, if it's gonna be a capital outlay project, like we're doing with the rest of this budget?
That's exactly, uh, so I mean, if, if there's money within the VSO budget that can be put towards Pine Street, great. If there's ARPA money that's available, great, I mean, as much money as.
It seems like the theme here is, let's use the ARPA money for capital outlay projects to save money for a budget.
That was the intent.
So why are we gonna go, why are we gonna get away from that now, and it's one account for 25,000 dollars? It was a mistake, someone put in, there's a typo, 25, went to 25,000, 2,500. Why are we just now not gonna use ARPA money to help the veterans into Pine Street?
Oh, we are, regardless of what happens here tonight, there is gonna be ARPA money that I'm gonna request to be used for this.
My colleague in seat one and I, we kinda disagree on this issue, where he's saying, give it to them, save all the money for them, like, well, forget it, do that, just use the ARPA money to take it, let's do as much repairs as we can for capital outlay projects, use some of the recovery money for that.
Just point of, just point of information for that, is the only category we can use is lost revenue, right? So that's, that's the only category it would fit in, right? So it wouldn't fit in any of the other categories, so would then, i- if you've got items that are, you think are gonna fit in categories that you really wanna do, and we don't get them there, we're gonna, we're just dwindling down the lost revenue, which is the most, the least restrictive. That's all, that's all I was going, so we've got money, and I, and I, and I agree with my colleague in seat two, I think there's more money that's near than 25,000 dollars, I'm just saying.
Correct.
I think what, what, all these capital items were coming out of lost revenue.
I, I, I think there's an argument to be made for one or two other categories, but, but I, we had this conversation a few weeks ago, I, I, I mean, with county money, I think it's gonna be a much harder passage, but it seems that with city money, it's just, it's a slightly more liberal interpretation of the rule. So I don't know that we're entirely limited to lost revenue, but I agree with you that there's not a lot of categories this could fit into.
My only point is if we could save money and had it go directly to the benefits of the veterans, let's just try to do that. So, getting back to my colleague in seat six, when she was talking about paying the rent, that's out of the question completely according to you, no other community is doing that for any of the veterans.
We're able to go in and through one of the sections in the 108 CMR, if somebody's in arrears, you can do a one-time payment for the in, in arrears, and it can't be more than three months. But again, that's a one-time thing, or there's also portions with payment where, with moving expenses, when one chapter 115 client moves into another community, there's assistance with that. But as far as rent and assisting veterans with their rent per se.
Okay, I, I hear what you're saying, but I think if there's anything we can do, let's, I'm sure, and this whole council wants to help our veterans, if it wasn't for the veterans, we wouldn't be here right now. If we were, I mean, we would probably be speaking a different language, as I've been told by many of veterans.
I say that all the time.
Yeah, it's, it's true, right? So we have everything to give, we have everything that we have because of our veterans, so let's give them as much as we possibly can. And, and with everything else, I just, um, I, I don't agree with the travel part of it, but just, you said all, how many people in your, in your office right now are going for training? Give me a number, five, 15, two?
Five.
Five people, and all, all the trains are overnight?
Conference, um, all of them are either four or a five-day conference.
So the three events that you do yearly are all five-day conferences?
Yes.
So you're gonna close the office for five days?
No, that's what I was saying earlier, I can't just.
Earlier you said you were not, you couldn't close the office, and I said everyone has to go.
On some of them, on, we're doing it staggered, and for those who would like to go, they can go to the in-person, anything else, they would have to do on their own pace, and I'm not sure how they're gonna be redoing that, because again, they're revamping everything on the virtual gateway.
So how many people do you anticipate going this year to all the conferences? One, two, or five, what's the number?
Probably two of us.
Probably two of you, to all the conferences?
Yes.
So, they're five-day conferences, so it's a total of 15 days?
Yes.
Hotel stays, meals?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, 'cause I, I tend to think it's a little high, I mean, 3,000 dollars, I guess, I get prices are going up, but they're not going up 50%, 100%, they're going up 20% for the most part, but. But, all right, I'm good with that. Thank you so much, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further on veterans? Counselor in seat seven, Counsel Reposo.
Hello. This question is to the city administrator. So we, you mentioned Bristol County ARPA money. Why is the Pine Street project not on the city's ARPA money list?
Well, it can be. I mean, I just, I'm always interested in offering the city council the opportunity to put the five signatures on and send it to Bristol County saying we support veterans. But the city's happy to do that if you don't want to.
Sure. But it, my question is, why isn't it not already? So I've, I've asked before for a list of the things that have come out of the ARPA committee. We still haven't gotten that list yet. I know it's been talked about, that it's virtual, it's video, I don't know what it is. But the question is, I've asked for it and I haven't gotten it yet.
Yeah, it was at least, what, a week and a half ago?
Yep.
That's outrageous.
So, so my question is, is that, is that project not on the city's radar currently as far as ARPA money is concerned?
Um, it was not. It's in conversations about the budget, about the condition of Pine Street. It is more recently on the city's radar. I think part of it is that there was this sense that because for the last several years there was $75,000 budgeted for Pine Street, that the work that we thought was being done at Pine Street was being done. And as it turns out, not the case. And, you know, there are probably, you know, any number of, of little landmines around the city that, you know, in my tenure as city administrator, I will discover and, you know, try to do something about. This is one of them. So realizing that what we thought was being done and what Officer Brito thought was being done, was not being done as well as we need it to be, as well, you know, as, as needs to be done to honor our veterans, this is now something that's a priority and that we'll use for ARPA money.
Is there any chance I can get that list?
Not tonight.
Soon?
No.
Not on the table. I'll talk about it off the record.
Thank you, sir. I yield.
Attorney Aiken, what do you, what was, what did you think was being done that wasn't?
So our understanding is that the 75,000 that's been in the budget for the last couple of years was replacing windows, was, you know, was doing all sorts of things to improve Pine Street. And, you know, the proof is in the pudding, I guess. And it seems that from what Counselor Washington has seen in the last, just in the last week or so, the condition of Pine Street is, is not as improved as it really should be, given the money that's gone to it. So that, not only does that require resources to go there forthwith, but it also probably requires additional inquiry to find out what happened to those funds that, that were spent and why the work maybe wasn't done to their standard.
So I'm sorry, are you saying you, have you, have you matched up what they've said was done to the actual building itself, or is it just on Counsel Washington's statement?
At this point, it's just on Counsel Washington's statement. And so it's on my agenda for this week to actually go to Pine Street and take a look. That's something I haven't done and I'm going to do in order to get to the bottom of it.
So there's certainly a lot more that needs to be done, but the exterior of the windows, heating systems, I believe all of that, I mean, they've, that all was done originally.
Right. No doubt about that. There, there have been certain things done, but I, I just feel like the condition of Pine Street is not what it needs to be.
No, agreed. Counselor in seat one, Counsel Kadim.
So I guess two things. So as we talk about, you know, Pine Street, this is where I had mentioned about the capital improvement plan being all encompassing, right? So I, I think it leaves all our buildings off the table to, to really see what the true capital needs are, you know, Pine Street being one of them. So I, I think we should have a document that would say, okay, this is the condition. Obviously, I, I think we would say, based on some improvements that were probably fair, right? And then how much do we need going into that building, right? I, I think just throwing money at it without knowing a, a true value and what the, the needs are, that's part of the capital improvements that should be coming through, whether that's coming from facilities, community maintenance, whoever's putting it together.
Facilities had done that originally, Counselor.
I'm sorry?
They had taken an inventory of the building and what it needed originally.
I'm sorry.
Facilities had done a list originally of what the building needed.
Right, but, but we have, we don't see that with part of the capital improvement plan that comes down to the city council. So we, we get a document and we don't see all the buildings as to, like, we don't see a true capital improvement plan that includes all of our buildings. So I, I think that's something we need to, and I, and I understand and recognize that the administration is, it takes time to build, so I recognize that, but I, I think we need to really truly understand what that building looks like amongst, including other buildings. The second, the second piece, I guess, is to my colleague in seat, and I got to count because he moved, seat seven, his request. Did you say we're not going to get his request?
Tonight? Tonight you are not going to get his request?
In general, in general.
Tonight.
I didn't speak to whether you're going to get his request at all. I just said, tonight I will not do it. I promise.
No, tonight, I get that. I saw, I thought you said it was off the table, which I got a concern with if it's off the table.
No, I said it's not on the table. Like, this is not on the agenda tonight. I'm not going to speak to what's been requested in the ARPA meetings.
But with all due respect, you don't dictate what's on the table. This is the city council, right? Counsel President?
I thought there was an agenda.
There is an agenda.
I thought there was an agenda that was published.
Well, then if you want to continue to ignore the city council at our request, then we can, we can go at it, right? I'm not looking to do that.
No.
Okay? But I've got a colleague in seat seven who has asked it not a week and a half ago.
Two meetings, the last two meetings.
Right. So, and it's not just him, it's every other counsel that's been asking for it. So are we not, I'll make a motion to reject the budget until we get it. Motion to reject the budget.
Motion to reject the budget.
Is there a second?
Made by Counsel Kadim. Is there a second? I'm sorry, did you say you seconded it, Counselor?
Yes.
Seconded by Counsel Dion.
No, we got you.
Madam Clerk.
On the motion.
Would you like a roll call? Counselor in seat two.
Are we talking about getting a list that was asked for about maybe two council meetings ago, I think?
No, it was asked for the last two council, at the last two council meetings.
That's what I said, two council meetings.
Counselor, I understand your point, but Counsel Kadim.
Well, I haven't made my point. Madam President, I haven't made my point.
All right, go ahead.
Please tell me what my point is, if you understand.
You were going to say we're going to reject the budget because he hasn't gotten his list, and then tomorrow Attorney Aiken just can give him his list. But he hasn't given him his list. It's been two meetings. Is that what you were going to say?
No.
All right, go ahead.
So I thought I heard you say that you're not going to do it tonight. And then I thought, I heard you say, call me and we can talk about it.
No, sir.
No?
No.
Okay.
My understanding is that we're here to talk about the budget. I wasn't going to get into an ARPA discussion with Counsel Reposo. I know he's been asking for it. And while it may appear to be an easy thing to collect, the reality is that there were meetings that were had in a number of different locations where people were going to suggest ARPA, ways to use ARPA. And we are essentially watching the records of those meetings, putting together a list, and then also, because this was also part of the request, going through how many of those things actually con, conform to the ARPA requirements and what the categories are for the ARPA.
Okay.
And so at this point, to address something that, one, I, I, I don't have a status on, I can't speak intelligently to it.
I, I, I respect that. Now, let me just get to my point about, beyond that. To my colleague in seat one's point, he's a new city counselor. He's, doesn't know much about the American Recovery Act. Neither do I. Many of us don't. It changes. It seems to change depending on the needs of the community, according to the governor and the federal government, anything else.
It has changed significantly.
It's a moving target.
Yep.
Why, you just gave a very elaborate reason on why he hasn't received it. Why wouldn't you call up the counselor and tell him exactly what you just told us? And let him know that, Counsel, we, I respect the fact that you want this information, and I respect it's going to help you make your decisions going forward. He's a brain new city counselor, right? I'm new too. I just collected in, in November. Fortunately, I was there a little while ago and I kind of remember some of the stuff that happened. So it's really very simple to just reach out to the counselor. Did you ever reach out to the counselor or have any department head reached out to the counselor? Have you been working on this to just let him know why it is that he hasn't got this thing yet? Why, because this is not the first time he's asked for it. He asked for it at the last meeting again, right? Obviously, no one's reached out to him. So we want to work together, right? We want to work and make sure that everyone gets as much information, because nothing is more, is more crucial to us, someone sitting in this seat as a counselor, to get all the information they need to make good, informed decisions. And you understand that, right?
I do.
So going forward, okay, not to excite counselors where we're making rejection of a budget strictly because no one's reached out to someone else or no one's given them information, because we've all asked for different things, not just two meetings ago, two years ago, three years ago, and it seems to be the administration will just take the counselor's request and give them the information whenever they feel is convenient and then, but I would have picked up the phone the next day and says, when am I getting this? And give you a timeline. He's a new counselor, though, and I don't, you know, he's, he's trying to do his best job. Please tell him why it is he can't give him what he wants and give him a timeframe of when you think you can give it to him. And he'll understand that. And then he won't be asking for it every, every meeting, right? That's my only point. That was my point, Counsel President, although I know you probably tried to read my mind, but it's a difficult mind to read at times, so I, I know why you didn't get it right. But I think that we all have to stop, you know, fighting each other on this stuff, because it doesn't make for good government, right? Do we really want to reject this budget today? No. Did my colleague really want to make that comment? No. But out of frustration of what's going on, I, I don't blame him, right? And if we don't have a working relationship where councils are going to be giving phone calls and councils will call the administration and say, hey, what's going on with this thing? You know, how much more do I have to go down in television and publicly ask for something that should have been given or should have been explained to why I'm not getting it? So I'll know it ahead of time. That's my only point is that. We all want to work with you guys, but you have to really just communicate, and we, maybe we should be communicating as well, but new counselor doesn't, you know, he just wants to get information and it should be given. At least if he doesn't get the information, tell him why, you know? Tell him, you're never going to see that if that's the case. Or tell him it's going to take us some time. Give me some time. You're not going to get it within the next month or two, but we'll promise we'll get it to you ASAP. Here's what we're thinking. That's all. For what that's worth. With that, I yield. Thank you.
So you have a motion to reject the budget made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Dion. Madam Clerk.
Discussion.
Sorry, discussion, Counselor?
I appreciate my colleague in, in seat two's remarks, because I think he was very articulate. One thing I will disagree is I absolutely, wholeheartedly meant to, to reject it, and I will take a vote, because quite frankly, I'm all about partnership. This goes back to the Braga Bridge, it goes back to conversations, it goes back to calls that I get from the administration, trying to work with them, always trying to reach out and work with them. But yet, when, when one of my colleagues asks for information and we can't get the information we requested or it's, we're pushed off, I mean, we've been talking about ARPA the entire night. My colleague in seat seven asks for a question, asks for information that he's been requesting for the last three months, two months, whatever you want to call it, it's, it's pretty close to two, three months, we can't have the discussion. I've done this before with prior administrations, let's be consistent. If we're not going to get the information that the city council requests and there's going to be just a lack of respect for city councils, then I'm, I'm ready to vote to not approve of the budget until we get the documentation that we requested. I, I don't, I don't understand how difficult it is and why there shouldn't be a list of requests that have been put in for ARPA. I mean, every single day it seems that, you know, priorities are changing, and I get priorities change, but we keep going down the road, the priorities are going to change even more, and then when are we going to start making the decision? We, we spent our lost revenue at least 100 times. I don't think there's any more lost revenue monies, right? So, and, and as the priorities keep changing, we're going to keep spending the lost revenue money, which is, is no longer existing at that point. So I, I'm ready to take a vote. I, I made the motion and I, and I stand by where I, where I am.
Counselor in seat three, Counsel Vice President Dion.
Yeah, I'm not going to speak for anybody. These are my comments and my comments alone. ARPA funding is, I don't think this is, should be dismissed at all. ARPA funding is very significant. If you look at the mayor's letter, Four Rivers receiving 85.6 million from ARPA rescue plan, the city will utilize these funds to invest in one-time capital expenditures which will alleviate the burden on taxpayers and not create a structural deficit. So I guess really the question is, what ARPA funding has been used to, for that purpose, A, because there have been many ARPA dollars that has been spent on other things, other than alleviating the taxpayer burden and for capital expenditures. My experience with ARPA, being on the ARPA committee only for a short time, if we go to square one where the public meetings occurred, there were two public meetings. People came up, people gave suggestions, told what they thought the money should be spent on, et cetera, et cetera. We're told anybody who wants funding can apply. There's no application. The application process is tell the administration, you, what project you have, how much money you want, basically. I'm, I'm putting this real simple. You know, they go through, if they get 20 requests, they go through the 20 requests, nope, 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 I'll send these two to the ARPA committee. Nope, nope, yep, these will go to the ARPA committee. The ARPA committee looks at the ones that are sent to them. There are many projects that never go to the ARPA committee. Is that a correct statement? And because of that, and because of the process, we can't, we will never be able to have a concise, realistic list. And that's not your fault. That's something, it's not tangible. A lot of it has just strictly been ideas that have fallen by the wayside. So if we're going to be honest about this whole thing, you're never going to get a, a concise list.[1489.91] list. It's just not going to happen. It's not possible for it to happen. And that's, and that isn't necessarily negative of anybody's fault, it's just the way this is rolled out.
If I may.
Yes.
What I understand the request to be, and who knows? What I understand the request to be is, all of the suggestions and requests that have been made in the early days of ARPA. So when the city council opened for public comment and neighborhood meetings and any number of other places where people presented their ARPA ideas. And I don't know, but I believe there were records, I don't know whether it was front of here or a committee, but I know there was a number of meetings. And finding out those meetings, when they took place, what was said, who has notes, who has a record, has been a task. And we've been doing that.
I could be wrong, but I don't ever remember any discussion on this floor.
All right, so it wasn't on this floor. I apologize.
Nothing to do with matter of fact, because the city council was shut down right from the get-go saying we had no say in it.
That's right.
We had no input into it, so we could just sit back and take the ride.
So there were, there were public meetings, I guess, where there was a record of those?
Two.
Yep. And then there's been other things.
Point of order, though. I believe those were televised. Were they not televised?
Yes.
They were televised. We have, you know, we have people watching those, going through, getting the list. Why, I actually think the request is a little more detailed than that.
It is.
Get all this information there, I think. I don't know, I could be wrong, but maybe you're right.
So, so what I understand the request to be is, what were all the suggestions? But then, in the context of the suggestions, what's eligible and what's not? So that's a, that's a second level of inquiry, right? So that's ongoing. And I would hope, I think Counsel Reposo would acknowledge that I'm very responsive about a lot of different things that there are, you know, questions about. This is one that has taken quite some time in order to do. And we're in the process of it, so.
Were minutes kept?
Huh? I'm sorry?
Minutes kept?
Well, we're just going from the recordings. I don't know if there were minutes kept. I don't, I don't believe there were, but I also know that there's other folks that in meetings with community members in a less formal setting did take notes. And so I've asked for those and just tried to track down anybody that has a record of this stuff.
So, basically, that's it in a nutshell and it's pretty obscure.
It is pretty obscure, but I think it's doable. Like, if it wasn't doable, I would have said it's not doable. But, you know, but the reality is, I know the records are out there.
But yeah, 85 million is extremely significant. Impacted last year's budget, it's impacting this year's budget. It can impact the taxpayers moving forward for years to come if we utilize it properly. But with that, I yield.
And Counsel Prah, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, I couldn't hear from here, but Counsel Kadeem said something about the Braga Bridge. What was that about?
It was about cooperation. It's the same thing that I've been saying, like, cooperation's a two-way street. Sometimes I feel like it's a one-way.
Okay.
You know, so we never, nobody ever wants to partake in shared lanes.
I'm glad you said that, because I read your email as well as the council president's email, that I was the only counselor invited to the bridge lighting. That was factually inaccurate.
Well, then you'd have to take that up with the mayor. I know there was somebody who came up and said some input and said that the mayor's a liar. So if that's the case, then you might, you might agree, you might agree with him because I think it was Mayor Coogan who said, I think it was Mayor Coogan.
Hold on, hold on. I understand your point of order, but Counsel Prah was asking your question.
Mayor Coogan said that you, you were invited, that you told him you were invited.
Correct.
No, that's not true. I went to the Cove with my husband because his aunt died, who was like a second mother to him. We went there for a drink. When I got there and saw the lieutenant governor and everybody sitting there, I said hello and they said, oh, we're going to go see the lighting of the bridge.
Well, I can tell you, Counsel Prah, that is not what we were told.
Point of, point of emphasis.
Well, I just wanted to be known. I did not.
The point of the Braga Bridge conversation was to say yet again, the city council was not invited.
Correct.
So there's no cooperation in partnership with the city council.
But I wasn't invited either, so let me just get that straight. Thank you.
I'll, I'll have a conversation with Mayor Coogan who said different. I mean, I'm not, I wasn't.
And to Makyla, I might be a little.
I believe that we just get back to what we're here for.
Yeah.
Counsel Prah has the floor. That conversation's over. Counsel Prah?
Yes. To Makyla. You know, today, I mean, I really have a passion for veterans and today being the 78th year of D-Day, where my godfather lost his leg on the bridge of Normandy and I've been thinking about, on the beach of Normandy, and I've been thinking about, I know I'm very passionate about it. So I don't mean to upset you, but I want to make sure that every penny that I can get from my veterans, I'm going to get. With that, I yield. Thank you.
And I understand that completely, ma'am. And my father too was a World War II veteran and, as you know, I'm a Marine Corps veteran. So trust me when I say that I'm looking out for my veterans. That's why I want to do that outreach, so that we can go ahead and get more veterans in and let them know what their benefits are. And as Counselor Washington had stated, we need to get more of the younger veterans in, so that's why we're planning on doing events for our GWAT, Global War on Terror veterans and having them know what their benefits are. So, yes, that might just look like whatever, but in the long run, with stuff that we're going to be putting out with our outreach, it's more than just that. I haven't been able to get our bags for them because they're on backorder, because I have no clue why. They're the nylon bags. We're also putting together hygiene products for our homeless. So all that's going to be going into what's going on with the outreach budget portion of it. So it's not like I'm just putting $10,000 in there just to put $10,000.
Stop by the vets' kitchen. There's a lot of people there who could use that on Wednesdays. And any other veteran that wants to go, it's a very welcoming location. I yield, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor in Seat 7, Counsel Reposo?
You, go ahead. I'll let you make your statement before I take the floor.
No, I'm good, Counsel.
Okay. I just, I'm sorry, opened Pandora's Box apparently here. But really, my, my want to know goes back to this idea of not just rerunning the wheel over and over and over again. You know, I recognize, and you took my line up being the new guy, so we're both new now. It's just the understanding that, yes, like Counselor Dionne said, it's a significant amount of money. I think it's important to not do the same hard work twice, three times, four times. So I appreciate what you're doing and I know you're working at it and that's awesome. I just, where I sit here and I look at the amount of money we have and everything, I just want to make sure it's benefiting the people we serve. That's all. And it's not, it's not about who does what or where it comes from and at the end of the day, I'm just looking at, how can we utilize this to help the people we serve? It's very simple. And I get the process is a little complicated and it started to be complicated from the start, but can, can we just move on and get it done? That's my frustration as I sit here and I appreciate everyone and what they've said, but really, at the end of the day, just, just trying to be the most educated on it so this way I can make an informed decision. That's all.
One piece of information, it's actually in response to a question that Counselor Dionne asked, as to whether or not we sift through. We don't. So actually, everything that gets submitted goes to the committee.
Thank you. I yield.
Counselor in Seat 8, Counsel Washington?
I just wanted to comment on something that you said that they, you know, did anyone go down there? Did they take my word for it? I just want to second that. I can't even hang a picture without it being crooked, so it shouldn't take my word for it. But I took pictures and so I'd be more than willing to give you those pictures. But what I do know with my very untrained eye is that the new floors that were put in are, that are being held down with duct tape and that the gentleman that are in his late 70s from the DAV, his office isn't completed in the work stop there and it's, it's had, the floors are lifting up, it's, it's not safe.
Are those new floors, Counselor?
Those are new floors. And so that's what I was told, these were new floors, just newly installed. The railing in the back, it's like you stick your hand on it, it's like a two-by-four that's going to go in. It's splintered, it's, it's unsafe. The floor that he showed me, the cellar where the windows need to be replaced, was crumbling as he walked down. I would never want my 80-year-old father to walk down those stairs. But I will say this, when I brought it to the administration today and Makyla and talked to them about it, they were all on board. So everyone was on board. Let's figure out what's going on there. Let's put the money in there. So it wasn't, you know, it wasn't a shock, it wasn't a dig, it was just like, hey, do you realize, I know that you're just new to this position, do you realize you took $50,000 out of that great thing that you put in there that's 75, but $50,000 is out and it's, to my very untrained eye, it was not safe. And I wouldn't want my family down there, let alone the veterans that we serve in this community. That should be a pristine place, that should be just as beautiful as that wall. So I'm just going to leave it there. So my, guess what I'm saying is, I do have those pictures if you would like to not just take my word.
My clarification to Attorney Aiken was, was he saying that items that Facilities Maintenance had told us had been done, big, big-ticket items that had, former person had come down and said was being done at the building? I heard him to say that, now he's hearing that that wasn't done.
I don't know what those big-ticket items were.
So that's what we need to compare.
Right. I don't know if there was ACs. I knew there's a new floor that's, you know, you know, all the thresholds, got duct tape all over them and they're all lifting. I mean, just unsafe, so. I yield.
Counsel Washington? Ma'am, just to let you know, the stairs are being addressed and we, we told them that they could not utilize those stairs, that they weren't supposed to be going down into the basement because of the fact that it is unsafe. Facilities Maintenance is already in the process of getting somebody to go out there and evaluate it and find out what we need to do to shore it up and have new stairs put in.
Yeah, that's good.
So that's already in the works. We've already been working with Facilities Maintenance and then outside.
Great, that's great.
Do you yield, Counselor?
I yield.
Counselor in Seat 2, Counsel Kamara?
Yeah, I know we've been going on with this issue for a while, but I just want to try to get some clarity on what Attorney Aiken, on what you just said. Getting back to my colleague in Seat 3, she brings up some very good points when she said that, you know, the requests come in and then the mayor picks and chooses which ones get done. You said it goes to a committee and then does the committee choose what gets done? Or do they make a recommendation to the administration?
No, no, the committee votes.
The committee votes?
Yes. So there, there's no final say by the administration, the committee votes. So what happens is that people make ARPA requests, usually it's in the form of a letter with supporting documentation. So the majority of people, frankly, the majority of people that are taken seriously document heavily their requests. They show, you know, if it's an organization that serves kids and it falls under one of those categories, or it's a, you know, impacted community, you know, anything, you know, they actually give statistics and they give costs and they give all that sort of thing, some more than others, but, but almost all of them come with a pretty robust level of documentation as well as a letter saying what they're asking for.
So the committee has the final say?
Committee has the final say. However, if the committee has questions, a lot of times they'll table the request and ask the person making the request to come back and in person, give more information. So some of the requests are considered without testimony, others are. And the ones that require more information from the committee are done with additional testimony.
So if members of the council make a request or a recommendation, as what we feel the money that we spent on, it goes to the committee?
I mean, I suppose so. If there's a request from the city council for, that actually is a proposal.
I mean, we've, we've talked about using it for the, the infrastructure work, for the CSO project to help alleviate the tax, how would that work? It's going to be sent it to the committee and just say, hey?
Well, so I, I think the, the better.
Or the administration take the lead on that.
Well, the, the path forward would probably be to figure out, you know, who's the department head that would be doing that, right? So in this situation, it's probably Mr. Furlong.
Correct.
So.
So Mr. Furlong make a presentation to the committee.
That's exactly right. So, so anybody, any councilor could probably sit down with Mr. Furlong and say, hey, we're really interested in that. He might say, you know what, I have X, Y, and Z that is already kind of a developed idea, and he makes that proposal.
Fair enough. Thank you. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion on the motion, the motion on the floor to reject the budget? Madam Clerk? Roll call?
Madam President, before you get to that, you do have the motion on the floor to reduce the veterans' expenses. Is that still? Would you like that to be entertained?
Counsel Kilby had seconded and then he had withdrawn his second. He is downstairs.
So my motion got withdrawn?
No.
Oh.
Counsel Dionne's motion.
So you'd like to take up the motion to reject the budget?
Yes.
Would that be both appropriation orders, the, for the general fund as well as the EMS fund?
Should we hold off?
Those two enter, those two comprise the, the whole budget at the moment.
Counsel, what's your wish on that?
So I, I think we're missing some counselors or at least one now.
One, he went downstairs.
Let me take a five-minute break.
So can I, can I just get some clarification? Did Counselors in Seat 3 say that there were projects that were set aside on the ARPA monies and then?
Not everybody gets approved. Not, not all, not, not all ideas have gone to the committee, but the committee vets the ones that do and then they vote on it whether they get approved or don't get approved. Right here is the list of projects, some projects that have been approved, if you want to look at it.
And then, did you, and maybe I misunderstood the conversation, did you say Administrator Aiken that that's not true?
I'm fairly certain that anything that's submitted to the committee that has a, you know, that has a allowable use, I mean, there's some things that are very clearly just aren't allowed.
Point of classification, I think what my colleague is getting at is that you suggested that when she made the example that the requests come in and then the mayor decides which projects go, you clarified that the mayor doesn't have a say in it at all.
That's right.
The committee is the one that approves it or disapproves it.
That's right.
So the committee gets all the, all the requests?
I, I believe that's true. Like, I'm starting to question it now because, you know, once you get asked the question a number of times, I'm, jeez. But no, I'm, I'm actually pretty confident that whatever comes in gets submitted to the committee. I don't think the mayor does anything to vet or whittle down the selection because that's, you know, that would just be putting an influence on there that, you know, that he's not interested in putting. The committee has the final say and the entire deliberation as to what's before it.
So then can I ask Counselors in Seat 3, through you, Madam President, is, do you feel that that's the case, that all the projects have gone through the committee?
I made the statement that not all requests have gone to the ARPA committee and I stand by that. And I'm not saying, you know, if there were 20 requests, that eight, you know, only five went, but it's not, it's, there's no formal process, really. It's very, oh, what's the word I'm looking for? Yeah, I mean, you know, it, it's not like applying for a, a building permit where you have to fill in like all kinds of things and documents.
Like a grant application, right.
Right. Or a grant or whatever. I mean, it's basically pretty simple. Somebody can say, for example, you know what, should I pick one off the list?
Well, just so I understand, I want to, I want to make sure you and I are talking in the same language.
In other words, ideas have been brought, have been brought to the office.
When you say.
The mayor's office. And not all ideas have been forwarded to the committee. Is it correct that, that the mayor doesn't ultimately decide in the end result who gets what money? Yes. It's done as a committee.
But I think anything that's submitted in writing as an application to the ARPA committee is submitted to the ARPA committee. And if you know something I don't know, I apologize for, for not knowing that, but I'm, I'm fairly certain that, you know, there may be people that say, hey, I've got an idea, that doesn't go anywhere because it's, it's not ever formalized as an application. But from what I understand, any submission letter is, is forwarded to the ARPA committee. That's what I, that's, that's what I believe is, is the case.
Well, I guess we could ask the mayor if he's ever not sent any to the ARPA committee. I mean, he would have his reasons not to. I'm not saying it's a bad thing.
No, no, absolutely. But, you know, you know, the only thing I can imagine is if something clearly, you know, we want to redo the highway, you know, well, that's just not, that's not allowable use. But any other submission that, that even has a, that even in a, in the most creative way might, might, might fall into a category, I think goes to the ARPA committee and then they have that discussion as to whether or not it's an allowable use under the rule. I don't know of any written request that's ever been put aside.
Okay, that, that answers my questions. I guess to answer your question on, on the motion, what do I want to do with it?
There's a motion on the floor and there's a second.
Right, but Madam Clerk asked if you all wanted to reject the appropriation orders.
Oh, yeah, all of them.
Just needed that. Thank you. On the motion.
Final question before we go.
Counsel?
The member of councils on the, on the committee.
Yes.
Was it Counsel Peckham?
No.
No, Counsel Dionne.
Originally, it was Counsel Peckham. I'm on the committee now.
You're on the committee now? Okay. So, I mean, you're a conduit to, I mean, you attend the meetings, you're a conduit to inform the council as to, I mean, as a member.
I have the list of stuff that's been approved.
So, that's my comment. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Just a, I guess a follow-up to that, I'm sorry. Pandora's Box just opens. So you've been to, through you, Madam President?
Yes.
To Counselors in Seat 3, she's been to two meetings. Have there been more than two meetings or is there only two meetings?
No, there've been more because Counsel Peckham originally was on the committee.
No, before, like, since you've taken, there's only been two meetings?
There were, let me think, there, I'm going to go out and let me say, there may have been three. I may have missed the first one.
There was and you missed one because you had a funeral.
That's right. I had a funeral. I did miss one. Thank you.
But to, while you're on the committee, Counselor in Seat 7 asked the administration for that list of items, just in case anything went to the administration and not to ARPA or has gone to the ARPA committee long before Counsel Dionne was on it. Is that correct?
And again, it goes back to the conversation about the wanting to look at using the Bristol County ARPA money and that, that's where it all originally started, just understanding of what's already been asked for, what are some ideas that maybe have not been addressed yet that we could, as a council?
Look into.
Look into and address and learn more about. That's where the, this whole thing started.
Got it. Madam Clerk?
On the motion to recommend that the appropriation orders for the fiscal year 2023 budget you rejected, Counsel Kadeem?
Yes.
Kamara?
No.
Dionne?
Yes.
Kilby?
No.
Palatier? Carrera? Raposo?
No.
Washington?
No.
President LaLibre LeBeau?
Yes.
The motion fails.
Anything further for veterans? See nothing, the council's going to take a 15-minute recess. Thank you. City Council Committee on Finance is back in session. Next item on the agenda is General Government. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Administrative Services. City Administration, Human Resources Management, Information Systems, Law, and Purchasing.
Okay. Okay, drawing your attention to page 103 of the budget. This is the City Administrator and Grant Writer. You'll notice that there is a reduction in that budget, largely because the position of City Administrator in FY '22 was budgeted for $152,000. I, because I like being here so much, do the job for the low price of $130,000. That's the savings. Does anyone have any question about the City Administrator's budget? Thank you, sir.
You feeling the pain?
Not at all. All right. Does anyone have any question about City Administrator?
No.
Okay. Getting us to Human Resources. Director McAlini is here. I'll ask him to come to the table, if that's okay. As you can see, there is a increase in salaries. That is an additional Human Resources Generalist that Mr. McAlini is, I believe, seeking to hire, and he can speak to that and correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's correct. So, I'm looking to add a position to the department. Currently, it is myself and then three other staff members, one HR Assistant, one HR Generalist, and one Employee Benefits Administrator. I'm looking to add a second Generalist position. As it currently operates now, both of, both the HR Generalist and the HR Assistant sort of function in the HR Generalist role. 10 years ago, there was a lot of distinction between those two roles, and now they've absorbed most of the same duties. I also say 10 years ago, because a lot has changed in the department in 10 years, and our staffing levels haven't really reflected those changes, so you don't have this in front of you, but our health insurance budget, we're actually paying slightly less or just about the same, no, slightly less than we were in FY '12. So, we've made a lot of changes in our department. We've done a lot with plan design. We've been very proactive about carving out different benefits to look for reductions where we can, but a side effect of that is we have a lot of additional workload as part of that. So, we've been able to manage, but I'd like to add a staff member so that we can actually progress, we can start doing things that have been neglected. Wellness to help reduce our claims. Sorry, I'll go through my notes for a second. There's other international drug programs that we can add. We can do more outreach on the benefits that we do have, so I think there's a lot of ways that we can really bring down claims, and then the department can focus on other things, or I can focus on other things, like training, which we haven't done in some time. So, I'm really looking to round out the department with the added position.
Thank you. Counselor in seat seven, Counsel Raposo?
Mr. McAlini, just to clarify, are you looking to fill the vacancy of the HR Assistant, or are you looking to add another Generalist?
I'm looking to add another Generalist.
Okay. So, the position that is vacant for HR Assistant, are you still looking to fill that, or is that going to cease to exist?
I am, so I'm looking to fill that at a lesser salary than it is now. It would be more clerical. So, like I said, right now, the person in that position mostly operates as an HR Generalist, but I would like somebody to come in at a more clerical level so that they can free up both Generalists to do more of the heavy load. So, someone that can prep enrollment forms, that can deal with phone calls coming in, intake, can reach out for. A lot of our employees, especially during COVID, have filled out a lot of stuff on their own without sitting with someone in my department, especially on the school side. So, we get a lot of paperwork back that's not correct, it's not complete, and it ties up a lot of time for the employees in my office. So, anything that could help reduce that workload so that they can function better would be, make us a lot more efficient.
And how many employees essentially does your department represent?
So, there's four in my department now, but you mean actual employees? So, school department's separate from us. They have their own separate HR. We handle just the personnel for them, so it would just be the general, anyone in the city side, so ballpark, 800, 850 employees. But as far as insurance goes, I mean, we have an insurance base of almost 7,000, so between 7,000 and 7,500, that, my office is the primary point of contact for those retirees, employees, dependents, spouses. It's all going through my office.
Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat three, Counsel Vice President Dion?
Hi, good evening. How are you? I know prior to you becoming the Director, you were doing work as a Workers Comp Claims Adjuster. Did that work carry over with you? Did you bring that back to HR?
No, so Workers Comp has always been handled by the Law Department, so no, that work is still done by the Law Department.
Okay. And you're only adding the one position? You're going to go from four to five total?
Correct. Adding one after you, yes.
And then you do have one person that's, that's a $6,128 raise?
Correct. So, what my intent is to have that, those two positions be exactly the same.
Okay. With that, I yield. Thank you. Counselor in seat four, Counsel Kilby?
Yes, just by way of, congratulations once again. Nick, I was always impressed with your knowledge, your work ethic, and your personality.
Thank you.
Even when I first met you, you know, at first, I thought you were Sean Kadeem's brother, but and I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but
I actually get that a lot, that people thought
Oh, yeah.
Like the property brothers. I yield. And then, oh, well, sorry about the joke, it's getting a little late.
Anything else on Human Resources? Counselor in seat six?
Nick, what is the medical exam fees?
So, they range based on, so all of our pre-employment physicals for any new hires, most of labor positions, they're going to range based on whether it's just general labor or if it's a CDL, but that's a fixed rate we go through work.
Is that for drug testing?
It's included in the pre-employment physical, yes.
Okay. And advertising, it's not going up?
No, so we've managed to stay under. We've actually used more advertising this last year than we normally have. It's done through the MMA, or typically MMA or Indeed. We try and stay with MMA because it is focused on municipalities, but, you know, I'd like to avoid that. We've just had more vacancies in the last year than we have in the past.
And your dues and memberships got reduced?
Yeah.
What aren't you?
It was at 750 before, 775. The only two that I'd be interested in are, I've already re-upped for the MMA, which I, it's just a really essential resource to be part of, and then the other one is SHRM, which I'm not part of yet, but I'd like to leave it open because they do have a lot of resources if MMA doesn't come through. I'm not sure what else it was budgeted in for before that.
Now, as part of Human Resource Director, you deal with MIS?
Yes.
Do you find that there's something we could do at MIS that would help your department as well?
As in Information Systems?
Yeah.
Well, that's going to go through the City Administrator Aiken for right now. He would oversee the MIS department.
But I mean, for job openings, things like that in the city?
No, job openings, no. There are other things through the MIS department and Munis that we're looking to use, and this is, again, part of why I'd like more staffing, like employee self-service is something that we want to implement. It all takes manpower to do.
People applying online, people who, I've had lots of people COVID has affected with mental health-wise, and you talked about a wellness, you'd like to do more with wellness. You have the employees' training system, or the employees, if someone is struggling?
We have the Employee Assistance Program through South Coast Hospitals, yep, and we also
And where is that on here?
So, that would be in other professional services.
Okay. But that went down, that decreased. That was my question. Do you find that you're able to get counselors, get somebody?
Ron Pelletier, the program is excellent. I mean, we had an issue come up on Thursday. It's one phone call to Ron, that person's in on Friday.
Great. Good to hear that. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything more on Human Resources?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
So, it's 10 o'clock. Does the council wish to continue?
Nope, 10 o'clock. That was it, is what we said, and I'm good.
So, we do have Corporation Counsel, who sat here all night, and his section is up next.
Actually, if I may, MIS is up next, and neither can I.
Switch it, put it on another day.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Next Wednesday, next Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn Finance has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Madam Clerk? We do have minutes to accept in full counsel.
Like to go in right into full counsel?
Yes, please. Our City Council now come to order, Madam Clerk?
Counselors Kadeem?
Yeah.
Kamara?